We'll call the Planning Commission meeting to order for October 24, 2018. Could we have a roll call and determination of a quorum, please?
Jefferson Sattler.
President.
Vice Chair Munro. Commissioner Borders.
Present.
Commissioner Doris.
Present.
Commissioner Esfwin.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
All quaroms present.
Thank you, Commissioner Tingle. Could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic towards its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? If you'd come forward, please. And there's a sign-up sheet there. If you'd print your name, I'd appreciate it. And then let us know who you are and let you...
My name is Suzanne Fox. I understand that the topics that I'm commenting on are not today's, on today's agenda. But first, I'd really like to thank Hope Sullivan for getting that boarded up gas station on the corner of Carson Street and Highway 50 cleaned up. It looks, and keeping it cleaned up. I don't know who she built the fire under, but it worked. And, but I would like to know what's going on. Jackson's owned this, that property since the end of May. It's been almost five months. Nothing is going on, and it's an eyesore, in my opinion. So I hope you would take that under consideration and get in touch with the home office, which is in Idaho somewhere, and let them know that they better get cracking on this project. And, of course, I couldn't leave here without mentioning vintage. I know it's not on today's agenda, and we in the neighborhood are studying the latest information. So you will see more of us in the days to come. Be prepared. But in my opinion, one thing I want to say very quickly is that I think that the new developer, the latest developer, the most recent developer, should have to go through the whole approval process right from the get-go. Just put everything, revert everything back on the zoning changes and the master plan to what they were before this whole vintage thing got going, and make the new developer jump through all the hoops and pay all the fees. It'd be some money in Carson City's pocket. But I feel very uncomfortable about him riding on the coattails of the previous developer. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Please feel free to come forward.
It's one last one for TWA. Is that still okay?
No. We actually will direct. Do you have a public comment after each agenda item?
Oh.
This is kind of more for if there's things that aren't on the agenda or something that someone wants to bring up. Or if you couldn't stay and wanted to make comments on it, and if you had to leave, that would be fine also.
Okay, so I can wait till I...
You can wait till we get to that item? Or, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay. Any modification of agenda, Hope? No?
Minutes.
Oh, yes.
Possible action, approval or review of approval amendment from September 27.
Changes or corrections, et cetera?
I move that the minutes of the September meeting be approved.
We have votes for Commissioner Esfwin. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tingle. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Commissioner Borders wasn't at the meeting, correct? Thank you. E1, SUP-18-131, for possible action to consider request for a special use permit for residential use in a non-residential zoning district of property zone retail commercial located at 110 Corbett Street, APN 002-137-08. Hope?
Sorry, technical difficulties for a moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject's property was actually a barn for a property on Rice Street. So you have the, you have the aerial there, and so parallel, you'll see across the street are three lots. At front on Rice, the backyards are on Corbett, and this was actually a barn. It was most recently used as a warehouse. The subject property is owned retail commercial. The applicant is seeking to modify the building to allow residential use in a non-residential zoning district. More specifically, the applicant is seeking to utilize the first floor for residential purposes and the second floor for commercial purposes. Surrounding land uses to the rear is a daycare. And I'll go back to the aerial. Okay. To the rear is a daycare. To the east is an apartment building. To the west is commercial. It's Ponderosa Stamp. And to the south are single-family homes that are fronting on Rice, Rice Street. So I think that you could say this is a mixed-use area. Per Carson City Municipal Code 1804-130, a residential use is allowed in the RC zoning district, subject to a special use permit and certain supplemental findings. The staff has reviewed the findings, and we can make them in the affirmative. I do want to talk about finding number five. And finding number five addresses meeting the standards of Title 18. A residential use requires two parking spaces, and tandem parking is not allowed in Carson City. So right now, the site can accommodate two parking spaces. When you go through the staff report, you'll see when you have a residential use in a non-residential zoning district, there's various open space requirements and so on and so forth. So the idea was, well, gosh, could he create more parking in the rear? I believe the answer's no, because it would compromise that, that requirement for the open space. So although staff does support this being a residential use, because it does, it is a mixed-use area, and I think we can make the findings, no other use in this building would be allowed should it be a residential use, because the only parking that can be accommodated onsite are the two spaces. So staff is recommending approval. Again, before the use, change of use can occur, the applicant would need to obtain a building permit and appropriate fire permits. Mr. Ed Sillsby, the property owner, is present, and he's the applicant, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Hope, the, the request is for a residential and office space, and yet I just wanted to point out, condition 14 is no office use is allowed and a residential use is established. So if we establish a residential use, obviously it cannot be used for an office, correct?
That is correct. And just one minor modification to what you said is the request is actually for a residential use in a non-residential zoning district. The office use would be allowed by right, so he wouldn't have to come before you for the office use. He has to come before you for the residential use. And so what I'm saying is if you all can make the findings and the affirmative and allow the residential use in the retail commercial zoning district, that's the only use that can occupy the site, given the limitation on parking.
So like I said, there could not be an office use. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions?
For staff. Does that include a home business?
No, a home occupation's an accessory use, and that would be allowed. And you're not allowed to have visitors to a homeless, to a home business.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Hello?
Hello, sir. First of all, do you accept the conditions of approval, knowing that if it is approved for a residence, you wouldn't be able to have an office there, correct? Except a home office or something like that?
I don't know. Whatever the guys require.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add to Hope's presentation?
Well, she did a wonderful job, I thought. We have a lot of problems here with people living in these places all over town.
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Would you state your name for the record? We know who Mr. Sillsby is.
Will we both sign in here?
Yes, please. If you'd print your name and then state it for us.
Okay, wait a minute. My name's Roger Rackham.
Okay.
And I've got a piece of property over there on Deer Run Road. Commercial property, you know, industrial. And we've got people living in these things with offices and whatever, you know. They've made permanent residences of these buildings, not just temporary. They're permanent. And I was just concerned how that would reflect on Ed here having an office in there, because they've got offices and they're...
I don't know what the situation is out on Deer Run Road, but according to the conditions of approval, if he accepts these, it has to be brought up to code. He can't live there while it's being brought up to code, I don't believe. And if it's condition 14 states, you cannot have a commercial office in there if it's a residence. Even if it's just for an office, he doesn't even have to be here. But because he's trying to make it into a residence...
Are you talking commercial office now or just office or...
Anything would be rented out or whatever. If he could have like a home office like you might have in your home or whatever. But as far as having anything that outside people, I hope you may want to help me here, leasing or renting or whatever, that would not be available in that space, no.
Okay. Well, anyway, I was just wondering about that, because they're living in these places, and they've all got offices, and they're commercial, you know. They've got machine shops in there, and Neil Weaver's got one up at the airport. For years, you know, he's been living up there. And this guy, right in front of me, he's living at 3003 Deer Run Road. He's got a machine shop and an office in there, you know, too.
Well, I believe if you would pointed that out to planning or code enforcement, if they, I don't know. They would, that wouldn't, hasn't come before us, sir. So what is happening elsewhere is not affecting...
So you're saying they're illegal too, then?
I don't know the situation, sir, so I can't really say.
Well, what's the code say?
Mr., sir, my name's Hope. It's easy to remember. If you want to give me a call, we can investigate your observations that you've seen. The commission has only studied the property at 110 Corbett. They haven't studied properties at Deer Run, and so the comments are specific to 110 Corbett, but I'm happy to look into, into the things you're identifying.
Comparing that to what Ed's situation is here?
No, I think that's great, and I'm happy to look into those.
Because these guys made permanent residents of this, and I don't know whether that's legal or not. I'm thinking it's temporary.
Ed's got my number.
Yeah. All right. Well, let me give you a call.
Perfect.
Okay.
Questions for the applicant, hopefully? No?
No.
And state that you accept the conditions of approval, all 14 of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Yes, ma'am. If you'd like to come forward, please, and print your name and... Could I, could I have you pull that mic down just a little bit more? There you go. I think that'll work better. Thank you, ma'am.
I am Paula Cannon, and I live at 138 Rice Street. So this barn was really the workshop, the carpenter workshop of Byrd Lindsay, a very well-known carpenter who worked on important buildings, the Governor's Mansion and such, in Carson City a long time ago. So he, I assume, built it. It's a little windswept. It looks like a tornado has gone through it, and I know the ice on Corbett Street is really rough when we have ice in town. But if he can make it work, it's better than the building sitting there alone. So that's my comment. And I wanted to change the barn to the carpenter shop. It was unique, because it's one and a half stories. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I will bring it back for discussion or a motion. Yes?
I'd like to move that we approve SUP-18-131, a special use permit to allow residential use only in the retail commercial zoning district located at 110 Corbett Street, APN 002-137-08, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Doris, second. All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Good luck, sir.
It's commercial, right?
You're allowed to have your house there. You didn't let that happen.
It's commercial, though.
The zoning didn't change. The zoning's still commercial.
It's still commercial.
The code zoning is still...
Thank you.
E2, for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit for accessory structure to exceed 5% of the parcel size and for cumulative square footage of the accessory building that exceeds 50% of the total square footage of the primary building on property zone, single-family, 21,000 square feet, located at 2183 Gregg Street. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is seeking to construct a 400-square-foot addition to an existing garage. This will result in the accessory buildings covering more than 5% of the lot, which actually will cover 6.5% of the lot. If an accessory, if the cumulative square footage of accessory buildings exceeds 5% of the lot size on lots in excess of 21,000 square feet, it can only happen subject to a special use permit. In this case, the applicant is also seeking, there's different code provision, the cumulative square footage of the accessory buildings will exceed 50% of the size of the primary structure. It will be at 52.5%. That is not subject to a special use permit. That's subject to administrative review. But as we've done in other cases, when we run into the situation, we usually bundle the requests together and subject it to a special use permit by the Planning Commission, as opposed to going to two different meetings. The findings for both are identical. So the subject property, I'll go back to the, this aerial, is surrounded by other residential properties. When I visited the site, I couldn't see the garage through the vegetation. So if you went to the site, you, you probably had a similar experience. When you consider a special use permit, you're considering the seven findings of fact. In reviewing each of the findings of fact, staff was able to make each of them in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. The applicant is Brad Bunkowski, and he is present, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Borders?
Hope, the excess square footage for the auxiliary building, does that include that little shed that's on the, on the site plan also, or is that another calculation altogether?
No, we take the cumulative square footage of all accessory buildings.
So that one is included?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners.
Welcome, sir. Having seen all the conditions of approval, do you approve or go along with all the conditions as written? Is there anything you would like to add to Hope's presentation?
No, sir.
Are there any questions for the applicant? There seems to be. I was out there the other day, right across the street, a very large kind of three-door building. I mean, it's quite common in that area. It looks like to have accessory buildings that are quite sizable.
It is. There's several detached garages in that neighborhood that exceed 50% of the primary.
And from reading this, you're just adding on to your existing same-color roof line, everything else.
Right. You won't be able to tell the addition is added on once it's done.
Appreciate that. Any, okay, no questions? Thank you, sir. Bring it back. Oh, public comment at this time? Any public like to come forward and comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll...
Commissioner Esfwin? I'll make a motion to approve SUP-18-133, a request for a special use permit to allow accessory structures located at 2183 Gregg Street, based on findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion. Commissioner Esfwin, we have a second. Second from Commissioner Tingle. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Seven to... E3, SUP-18-142, for possible action, to consider request for a special use permit to allow a detached accessory structure. Cumulative square footage of detached accessory structure will be 112% of the size of the primary structure on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 1420 Deer Run Road, APN 010-082-06.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is seeking to construct a 1,760-square-foot shop building on his property. This will result in cumulative square footage of accessory buildings being 112% of the size of the primary residence. So as we just talked about, when you have the cumulative total of the accessory buildings exceeds 75%, it's subject to a special use permit, and the Planning Commission's authorized to issue a special use permit upon making the seven required findings of fact. Staff did visit the site and has reviewed this application. We are recommending approval. I do want to comment, I was glad to go out to that site, because that view out there is fantastic. So I don't get out that way too often, so that was a treat. And the applicant, Jared, I have it here, Jared Cordenoway. I think I got that wrong, but he's here, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for staff? I'd like to comment that the public may not have received or that saw this packet. We received some late information, a late email from Kurt and Charles Barron, 20-year resident of Deer Run Road. We feel you should approve this special use permit located at 1420 APN 01008206. So there was a letter of support from obviously one of his neighbors or whatever. Just wanted to make sure that's added to the record. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, please? Good, sir.
I have one, not really a question, but on the, the 112% size of the primary structure, I do plan on adding to my house next year another 500 square feet. So it'll get that number back down to, to it looks a little intimidating for adding a structure on there. And I had one more question about the setbacks, and I talked to Hope about it. I'm just trying to avoid any part of views taken away. And my main neighbor to the east is, or not to the east, actually, to the south. I want to get the garage tucked back as far as I can in my property, so the peak of the ridge doesn't affect their view. And I'm, and we're all on a slope out there, so the one, the east end of the gable end is going to be probably only 19 to 20 feet above the ground, because I have to dig it in about five to six feet into the ground to get it level with how my property slopes.
So your question's on setbacks?
On the setbacks, if I could get, if I could, if I'm able to tuck it back in farther past...
What are the requirements as of now, Hope?
Right now, let me see.
Thirty feet is the rear and fifteen...
So you want to go farther to the north?
Yeah. Farther just to the...
She put left, right. Okay.
Not really the north. It'd be the...
South?
Southwest.
Okay, the south setback is 15 feet. You're right at 15 feet. So what we can do is, the commission can't consider any type of variance right now. What, it's not agendized. We can talk after this and let the commission focus on the request for a building that's was 115 square percent cumulative. And once the commission has a chance to vote on that, we can touch base tomorrow or next week and talk about the position. Okay?
If that comes, have you had contact with that neighbor?
I've talked to, like, the neighbor that you just mentioned. I don't know who that is, but I've talked to all four corners of my neighbors.
Good.
And one, one of my neighbors, he has a 24-inch per foot garage. The one on the top, she was worried I was going to build it up closer to the road, which we're not going to. The one... The one on the, you know, the east end, let's see, and then the one, the one with the view, he was, he came over and talking to me just about the heist, and then all the other ones around me didn't, they didn't say anything.
I think, it looks like Hope has a way to hopefully resolve that, but in all the other recommended conditions of approval, you're good with as far?
Yeah, you know, there's nothing in there that I hadn't planned on already doing. I mean, the lighting outside is fine. I didn't, you know, I.
Because if there's anything you're not comfortable with, you need to address them now or once you accept?
No.
Okay.
Everything's fine. I mean, I, yeah, I read it, it's good to go.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment at this time. We'll have anyone who has to make public comment on this agenda item. You come forward and write your name and then let it state your name.
Hi, I'm Merlin Payne. I got a letter of notification, and I beg your, my neighbor there. I'm not on one of his four corners, I'm actually a street or so above. I didn't get the packet, so I'm not sure what the specifications for the lighting is. That is one of my concerns, because it's a rural area, and one of the many reasons that we live out there is for the night skies. And I'm hoping that this is not going to interfere with that. So no mercury vapor, for example, I request. The other thing I request is that the outdoor lighting be shielded down toward the earth, not spread around into the atmosphere, which is reflected in the dust that we have out there, that kind of thing. So those are my requests. We get in all kinds of interesting things out in that neighborhood. I do have a little bit of a comment, and I don't think this is obstructive. That facility looks a little large to me. I'm not objecting, but it just looks a little large. My main concern is with the lighting, so thank you for hearing me.
And any, any lighting would have to meet residential code, et cetera, and I believe it always down draft lighting normally isn't hoped?
Right. The Carson City Municipal Code mandates dark sky compatible lighting, so any lighting fixture would have to be shielded from the sky so light was directed in a downward direction.
Any other public comment on this item? If not, for discussion or a motion? Commissioner Tingle?
I move to approve SUP-18-142, a request for a special use permit to allow a detached accessory structure located at 1420 South Deer Run Road, based on findings and subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Borders?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it, but do we need to have the APN number in that caption?
No, the DA's office has actually modified the motions to make them a little shorter.
Okay.
And since it's in the title, we're good.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Yeah. Are we dealing with four and five as a group? Read them both. Okay. E4, SUP-18-132, for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit to allow a marijuana cultivation facility on property zone, general industrial, located at 5,700 Morgan Mill Road, APN 005-541-38. And E5, SUP-18-47, for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit to allow a marijuana product manufacturing facility on property zone, general industrial, located at 5,700 Morgan Well Road, APN 005-541-38. Okay, Ms. Ferris?
Thank you. Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. A bit of background on medical marijuana establishments in Carson City before we get into the specifics of the request before you this evening. In 2013, the state legislature passed the Medical Marijuana Act, and subsequently, in July of 2014, Carson City adopted an ordinance allowing for medical marijuana establishments in a general commercial and general industrial zoning districts, subject to approval of special use permit and subject to specific requirements as outlined in the code. A medical marijuana establishment would include dispensaries as well as cultivation and production facilities. It's also worth noting that each type of facility requires its own special use permit. So if, as in the example tonight, an applicant is going to operate a cultivation and production facility on the same site, two special use permits would be required. The chair had requested some information about existing facilities, so I prepared this map, which shows the existing operational medical marijuana establishments in Carson City. Since 2014, the city has received applications for a total of 28 special use permits for medical marijuana establishments. Of those 28 applications, two were withdrawn, six were replaced with new permits, either due to expiration of the previously approved permit or change in ownership, and three permits expired. The remaining active special use permits are shown on the map. There are seven in operation currently. Two are dispensaries, two are cultivation and production facilities, two are cultivation-only facilities, and one is a production-only facility. There are also two facilities currently under construction. They're also mapped here, and both are cultivation and production facilities.
And the, go ahead.
So the application before you this evening is a request for a special use permit to construct and operate a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility on Morgan Mill Road. The zoning for this area and this parcel specifically is general industrial. The nearest residence is located approximately 1,100 feet southwest of the project site across the river. It was also brought up in one of the email correspondence that BLM is located there, directly across the street on Morgan Mill Road. BLM is not the landowner of that property. BLM leases that property. BLM was not notified, however, the landowner was appropriately notified, and we have not received any comments. So because this would be a new building, all applicable development standards for new construction will be required, including site design, landscaping, parking areas, et cetera. As shown on the proposed elevations, the applicant proposes to use stucco with rock accents and metal roofing, all in earth-tone colors compatible with existing surrounding buildings. The building is proposed to be approximately 10,740 square feet in size and would house both cultivation and production. The cultivation operation would occupy approximately 67% of the building, and production facility would occupy approximately 33%. The anticipated average daily trips from this facility is 48, and that is based on 10 employees with hours of operations from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. And this does not trigger the need for a traffic study. Staff has reviewed the proposal against the development standards for medical marijuana and has found that all requirements will be met, including security measures. Additionally, staff has incorporated recommended conditions of approval where appropriate to ensure that these standards will continue to be met throughout the operation of the facility. Staff has also verified that the proposed facility meets the minimum distance requirements of at least 1,000 feet from schools and at least 300 feet from facilities with the primary purpose of providing recreational opportunities to children. There are seven findings of fact that must be made in the affirmative in order for the Planning Commission to approve the special use permits. Staff believes all seven findings can be made as outlined in the staff report and is recommending approval, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and adoption of the findings. The applicant is here and may wish to speak, and I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff? I appreciate you getting that information together for us and what was available or whatever. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Borders?
On condition number 28, should that also read cultivation and production? We've been using the two words together throughout the whole document, and in this one item, we mentioned that the product should not be visible from the outside the cultivation facility, but it's also a production facility.
Yes.
You don't want to have them put in one window on one side.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question. We use the term medical marijuana facility in your staff report, but would that limit the product to only medical marijuana, or can it be, will it also be recreational?
Per the code, if there's a lawful medical marijuana facility established, they may start producing, cultivating, selling, depending on the nature of their business, non-medical marijuana as well, so recreational marijuana. So no, this wouldn't preclude recreational marijuana.
Thank you.
I had brought up the, again today, the BLM fact that it's located right across the street, and that's not what we're here to determine or whatever, I understand. I believe back when we had a couple out on Deer Run Road that came up that we did, had contacted BLM, and I think, Commissioner Eschwein, didn't we get a letter or something from them at one point saying? Anyway, it's the aspect of the federal not accepting, you know, what we're doing, so I wish, as big as the town is, that maybe there was someplace not directly across from BLM to put it, but I realize that's not what we're here to determine or whatever, so. Anyway, any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Having seen and read all the conditions of approval, or you go along, I mean, those are all acceptable to you as written?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to add to the staff report?
Nope, just thank you for your help and professionalism throughout this process. It's been awesome.
Could you, could you state your name?
Chad McCoy.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public comment at this time. Is there anyone in public comment who'd like to step forward? You have to come forward, ma'am, and speak to the microphone. Restate your name and then speak to the microphone, if you would, please. Thank you.
I don't. There are two different items. One was 132, and this one's 147. Which one are you working on, or are you combining them, or what? I'm just confused.
One is the medical, the grow facility, and the other is production, ma'am. There's two parts, they're all in one building, one operation.
Okay.
Certainly. Any other public comment on this item? If not, we'll bring it back for further discussion.
We had that comment from the.
Oh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Eschwein. We received another email comment that may not have been in the packet or was available to the public, from James and Roxanne Young on 2150 North Deer Run Road. This email in regards to Carson City Public Hearing Meeting held Wednesday, October 24th, marijuana cultivation production facility 5,700 Morgan Mill Road. We have the following two concerns relative to the placement of the business near our residential neighborhood. Concern about criminal activity taking place while the business is open during the day, as well as burglies and other crimes occurring in the night hours. Concerns relative to traffic congestion, collisions, and excessive noise that may adversely affect the surrounding residential neighborhood. Although we are unable to attend, we would like to bring our concerns to the attention of the members. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. And you stated again, the nearest residence was how far away?
Approximately 1,100 feet southwest across the river.
Further comment or a motion?
I have no problem making a motion on these two items. I move to approve SUP-18-132, a special use permit request to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone, general industrial, located at 5,700 Morgan Mill Road, APN 008-541-38, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Do I need to make a motion?
Do we vote?
We vote separately.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, I second that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I'm sorry.
I would propose to vote aye, but we have a, there's a conflict in the original statement and this statement again on APN numbers. Which one is correct?
Going forward, the APN will be eliminated from the motion, but it doesn't hurt the motion, it just.
No, but for the record, we stated two different ones. The one on, the one in the, in the agenda states 005, and the one in the motion states 008.
Oh, I see what you were, okay. Under E4, the APN I read was 005-541-38, and 005, yeah, on both of them.
We introduced the subject as 005, and we're, the motion is 008.
The correct, the correct APN is 008-541-38.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which was the motion, and I again voted aye. I'm sorry to have interrupted.
So, okay. All righty, so again, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We have a motion on the second item. Commissioner Tingle?
I move to approve SUP-18-147, a special use permit request to allow a medical marijuana production facility on property zoned, general industrial, located at 5,700 Morgan Mill Road, APN 008-541-38, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Borders. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. E6, SUP-18-135, for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor on property zoned, retail, commercial, RC, located at 113 Rice Street, APN 002-152-02. Ms. Ferris?
Thank you. Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. Earlier this year, you may recall, the Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance to allow tattoo parlors as a conditional use in the retail, commercial zoning district. So the request before you this evening is for a special use permit to operate a tattoo parlor in an existing 900-square-foot facility on Rice Street in the retail, commercial zoning district. It's also worth noting that the site is located in redevelopment area one. The subject parcel is a multi-tenant property with other onsite uses being a music store, therapist's office, retail space, and residents with a single-car garage. While much of the surrounding properties are zoned for commercial uses, as well, there are four existing single-family residences immediately north and northeast of the project site in the retail, commercial, and multifamily apartment zoning districts. The site plan here is really more of a floor plan, it just shows. The site plan here is really more of a floor plan, it just shows the existing facility fronting Rice Street, and the next slide shows the existing exterior of the building. The applicant is also proposing to meet the parking requirements by utilizing a combination of on-street and off-street parking, and this is consistent with Section 2.3.13 of the Development Standards, which allows for flexibility in parking requirements if the existing building is located within a residential office, general office, or redevelopment district. In this case, as I stated, this property is located in Redevelopment Area 1. The property is built out and cannot feasibly provide additional onsite parking, and when considering all of the existing and proposed onsite uses, a total of sixteen spaces would be needed to be provided onsite, and that specific breakdown is included in your staff report.
Thank you.
The site provides for eight diagonal spaces and one garage space onsite for a total of nine onsite spaces. There are also two tandem spaces provided behind the therapist's office, however, as Hope stated in one of her earlier presentations, tandem spaces cannot be counted for onsite parking in Carson City. Given the relatively small number of required spaces for the tattoo parlor specifically, the fact that more than 50% of the required parking for the entire site is provided onsite, and that there's ample parking along East John, as well as some available parking on Rice Street, staff feels that the application of this section is appropriate for the site. So here are some photos of the site showing the parking along the Rice Street frontage. The photo at the top and the photo at the bottom shows the parking along the John Street, East John Street frontage, and these photos show the available onsite parking located on the west side of the existing buildings. So staff has received email correspondence from two members of the public opposing the use. They've cited concerns with the type of proposed business, and one commenter has cited concerns with parking on Rice Street. There are seven findings of fact that must be made in the affirmative in order for the Planning Commission to approve the use. Based on the public comments received to date, I'll focus on finding six and seven. Finding six requires the Planning Commission to find that the use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and finding seven requires the Planning Commission to find that the use will not result in material damage or prejudice to other property in the vicinity as a result of proposed mitigation measures. As outlined in the staff report, staff was able to make these findings because the tattooing will occur entirely indoors within an existing commercial space. The business hours are similar to other retail-type of uses in the area, proposed to be from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., up to seven days per week, and as I discussed earlier, parking is provided both onsite and on-street, consistent with Section 2.3.13 of the Development Standards. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and adoption of the findings included in the staff report. I believe you have some supplemental comments in front of you from members of the public?
Nope.
No? Okay. No? They were email. They were email.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And the applicant is here and may wish to speak. I'm available for questions.
Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Hello? I do. My name's Tony Jackson.
Did we, could you clarify the, is the businesses that are right around there again? I'm sorry, not the businesses that are part of this site, but isn't right across the street and whatever?
So directly north, you have...
Telephone's ringing.
Directly north, you have four single-family residences. There's also a bar across Rice Street. To the east, you have the chiropractor's office. To the west, you have retail shops and a used car lot, and to the south, you have payday loan center and retail shops.
And the Roberts House is down the street and around the corner and up from that, I believe, from being over there?
Yes. Yes.
I was just referring, there's a couple mentions of the Roberts House, et cetera, in these letters, so wanted to clarify that as to where it was located and the other businesses right in the area. Thank you. Public comment on this item? Anyone wants to come forward and make a comment?
I'm Paula Cannon. I live at 138 Rice Street, which is at the end of Rice Street at Fall. I'm cattycornered from the Pioneer High School. At the other end of Rice Street is the Roberts House and the museum and carriage house. That building was built in 1859 and moved to Carson City in 1873 or '40, we can't quite decide on that, but it is an old building. I have lived in the house, I'm working on my 25th year. The bar was there when I came. It has a house behind it that has, I think, a Corbett Street address. And then we have a house that was built in 1910 by the carpenter that I mentioned before, Bird Lindsay. There's another house, and I don't know when it was built, and my house was built in 1876, 142 years of age. My darling little garage was built by the owners of that time in 1925. We are an old, established street, and I don't think that we're very compatible to a tattoo. The bar is a different, sort of a neighborhood bar, and it's quiet, except when they had a motorcycle person there, and he would leave at 12 o'clock at night and rev up and let you know what time it was, closing time. We have a lot of traffic on Fall Street, and they cut across Corbett, Rice, and John to avoid the intersection of Carson and Williams Street or 50. They avoid that traffic light, and so we have semis going all the time. Of course, now with the construction of the Pioneer High School, we have a lot more, and they start whenever the sun comes up, which was interesting this summer at 4:30 in the morning. But that building is going up, and it should be finished in February. I don't know what property values will be like if this tattoo parlor goes in. When I moved there, the building was a very nice antique store. I don't want to lose the value in my house, and I'm sure that all of you have the same feelings with where you live. The only thing I can say is I'm not happy about the tattoo. It's a temporary thing that the city gave, and other tattoo artists had tried to move into more central areas, and they were denied that, and so that's not fair in some estimations. I would like to say, would you like it this half a block from your house? That's what it's going to be for me. I have the homeless who like to spend the night in my yard and relieve their trash, and I have the traffic, and now we're going to have something that is not quite compatible, I believe, with what Rice Street is. Thank you very much.
I am co-owner, and I also worked at the Tap Shack, which is the bar across the street, for five years. I also, our aunt lived in the home right next to it, which we do know is a historical home, and we value that so much. We have also done a lot of research and seen that that building has been empty more than it's been full, and we plan on completely renovating it, renovating the area, having a state-of-the-art security system that will actually cover her house, cover the museum as well, help hopefully with the transient problem. Mike Lloyd, who owns the bar, is a dear friend of mine. I understand that it is a neighborhood. We definitely do not want to disturb any peace. We want it to look better. We want to work with the community to be able to have an art program at that high school, make it a better high school, work with all of the people in the surrounding areas, and we think with the parking, there is a new parking lot that's being built alongside of the high school. That will help a lot. We have seen the parking issues that are there. We would like to find a solution to that as well, because it will affect us as well. And if you get a retail store in there, it's going to be a lot worse than the one or two people you might have for us.
I'm here to offer support for Tony's business. I, oh, my name's Albert Hakes, and I will lead into why I'm here and who I am. So I understand the concerns that the lady in front of me has spoken about, and I, I value them. I think sometimes when a business moves into your neighborhood, sometimes it can feel like they're stepping on your toes, kind of stepping into your privacy. And the reason I'm here to offer my support is because Mr. Jackson is responsible, half-responsible for one of the most valuable things in my life, my son. He has been part of my family now for three, it's going on three and a half years, and I couldn't think of a better person to have a business in this location. I understand the tattoo shop stigma can sometimes be negative, but personally, I've seen what he can do with my son and in his personal life, and as anyone here can understand, sharing your son with somebody can be rather difficult. So it takes a lot for me to stand up here and say, he is a good man, and that him owning a business in this area would be beneficial to this section of town. Being a resident of Carson City now for 11 years, I would like to say, this would help remove that stigma that people that appreciate the art of tattoos and appreciate the business side of it as well can overcome. It's a really good thing, and my son's mother's here, she just spoke. Tony was up here earlier, and I honestly couldn't be more proud of what he's been doing. I myself am tattooed, and I'm an active member of the community. I'm a vice president on the Little League Board. I worked the Boys and Girls Club for 13 years, seven of which here in Carson City, and I'm just, like I said, it's, I understand the apprehension towards it, but please consider approving, because if you have any anxiety towards him coming in, this is the guy you want to play ball with. He will listen to you, he will best accommodate what he needs to do, and he is more than fair to have people come to him and respond appropriately. So I would just like to say thank you for your time, and just please consider the approval. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Sharon. I'm the owner of the property, and when Mr. Jackson came to us and proposed putting his tattoo shop in the property, I too had questions. I was like, ooh, I'm not sure that that would be, be a great business to have here, and then I got to know them. They're super motivated, super positive for the community, and I feel like it would actually benefit the entire area. I feel Rice Street will develop. Rice Street will be, you know, like Cree Street, hopefully someday, and they're the people that are going to help make that happen. So myself, my mother-in-law, or my husband are in complete support.
Hi, my name is Shelley Schaaf. I'm a retired federal employee, and I'm a grandmother, and I have tattoos. I just want you to know that transients can't afford tattoos. They're expensive. It's an art form. I have to save up for mine. It's not going to draw in transients. In fact, I think there's always room for more art in Carson City. So I support them. Thank you.
My name is Zachary Haynes. I did listen to some of the concerns that she had about her, the business being on Rice Street, and the bar that everybody's talking about, it gets a little rowdy, and they're going to be open, normal business hours, 11 to 7. I just think that it's a shame that we would even consider saying that it's going to be as bad as a bar, that it would be as much of an issue. We don't have drunks coming in and out and revving their engines and acting like jerks outside, so I would, I would hope that you guys would consider approving this.
My name's Randy Jackson. I'm Tony's stepfather, but I'm also a retired police lieutenant, and I just want to vouch for Tony's character. I want to vouch for his determination, I want to vouch for his professionalism. He is, he is definitely somebody that I can say with a great deal of confidence, and I would not come up here and say it if I could not do that, but I would say with a great deal of confidence how proud I am of this man and, and what he's accomplished so far, and the great things that he's going to accomplish in this community moving forward. This is not to disparage anybody, it's just to, to merely vouch for, for Tony and, and for the project, and know that, again, if I could not come up here and stand and, and say that this is for the safety and health of this community, I would not do it. And so I, I vouch for that, and so again, I, I trust that you could consider approving this project. Thank you very much.
My name is Alexandra Cannon, and I wanted to say with his professionalism and researching and representing the other local tattooists in town that I approve, and that I believe that they'll be respecting the properties and helping and enhancing the Victorian properties around the area. And I live at 138 Rice Street. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. I'll be short. I'm Montana, her mother, her daughter. My legal address is 138 Rice Street, because I live with the wild horses. I'm the one who's taking care of them, and trying to raise ranches for homeless vets, at-risk veterans, and veterans who need help using the horses as a draw for guests to come in. We're going to be doing this... We're going to be doing this around 12 states. Okay. Mom's been here about 25 years. I've been working in that garden not too far behind. And the point is property value. The point is one side, yes, you can have your Curry Avenue, but the other side should be on the west side of 395. These are some incredibly beautiful houses. This is nothing about the people. I'm sure they have the best clientele, because if they are the best, they're going to charge more. This is about the value of the home and what's it going to do to you. And I don't have, I don't see any studies on this. Okay? As you can tell, history is part of the family. I'm the weird historian. I do world history, biblical history, and spiritual history. Tattoos were started in Africa. They were started with the tribes of the African community to which demonic entity they're going to be associated with. When the needle pierces the blood or the skin, there is a soul tie. I don't care what you believe or what you don't believe. I'm telling you, this is the history, and this is what the cause is. I personally think it's a person's individual decision, but my daughter had a million-dollar contracts between Ford and Wilhelmina Modeling Agencies, which were lost due to her decisions. So I thank you for your time, but I would like to state, I would like to request a home value study before this is approved. Thank you for your time.
If not, I'll bring it back. And if you'd like.
Mr. Commissioner, I, I'm sorry about that. I, I move to approve SUP-18135, a special use permit to allow a tattoo parlor at a property-zoned retail commercial located at 113 Rice Street, APN 00215202, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I'll second that. Moving forward, E7, SUP-18137, for possible action, a considered request for a special use permit for a childcare center on property-zone retail commercial, RC, located at 640 East John Street, APN 002-142-17.
Thank you. Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. The proposed childcare facility would be located within an existing multi-tenant building located on the northwest corner of East John Street and North Rup Street in the retail commercial zoning district. The space the applicant is planning to lease is approximately 1,200 square feet in size and proposes the use of approximately 800 square feet of outdoor space to the rear of the facility. The maximum number of children anticipated is 20, and there would be a total of two employees on site. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., with drop-off and pickup during the first and last half-hours of the day. Also located on the parcel to the rear is, of the proposed childcare facility, is an existing fourplex. It's important to note that the residential component of the site has eight onsite dedicated parking spaces, while the existing multi-tenant building has no onsite parking and is limited to on-street parking along East John Street. So the photos here show the existing multi-tenant space. The photo at the top is taken from East John Street looking at the building. The photo at the bottom is taken from North Rup Street and shows the entrance to the proposed childcare facility. This shows the proposed outdoor space, and the applicant is proposing to modify the landscaping, adding turf as well as fencing. The top photo here shows the facility as well as the four, the existing fourplex. At the bottom, the photo shows the public parking area the applicant is proposing to utilize for dedicated loading and unloading area. So this is where I'm going to focus a little bit on the parking. All childcare facilities must meet the requirements outlined in Section 1.6 of the Development Standards. After reviewing the application, staff had immediate concerns with the lack of onsite parking associated with this parcel, particularly the lack of safe loading and unloading areas. The five spaces in front of the project site, as proposed, would serve as parking not only for the subject business, but also for other businesses in the same building, as well as businesses in the area and the general public. Additionally, per the application, the applicant has a verbal agreement with the owner of Walton's Funeral Home to allow the two staff members to park in their lots across North Rup Street. Staff found that the application does not meet the requirements of Section 1.6 as they relate to parking. Parking is required to be onsite at a ratio of one parking space for each employee, plus a permanently maintained loading and unloading area in accordance with engineering standards. The on-street parking is located on the north side of East John Street, within approximately 30 feet of the intersection with North Rup. Providing a loading and unloading area this close to the turning movements from North Rup onto East John could result in unsafe conditions during pickup and drop-off times with children in the immediate vicinity of cars backing into the traffic as well as cars turning off of North Rup. Additionally, the existing lack of parking will increase the likelihood of parents using adjacent private parking lots when dropping off and picking up their children, and this would place the burden of parking on adjacent businesses without any formal agreements or city approvals. With regard to the employee parking, this portion of North Rup is classified as an arterial. Utilizing the parking lot on the opposite side of the road could create an unsafe situation where employees would be forced to cross the arterial during one of the busiest times of the day. Moreover, since the funeral home has only provided a verbal agreement to allow the employee parking, there has been no evidence provided that would indicate that the funeral home has excess parking to share. So this photo shows how close the on-street parking is to North Rup Street and East John Street. In addition to the concerns with parking, the Health Department has also expressed concerns with the application, noting that the outdoor space, as proposed, may not be sufficient for the number of children anticipated at the facility. Additionally, the Health Department has indicated they would not recommend approval of the SUP based on the information contained in the application. And Dustin Booth from the Health Department is here tonight and can expand on this should the Commission have questions. There are seven findings of fact that the Planning Commission must make in the affirmative in order to approve the special use permit. Staff was unable to make findings two, three, five, six, and seven in the affirmative. Due to the lack of onsite parking and safety concerns, staff is recommending denial of the special use permit. Couple of things to note quickly before I take questions. We did receive an email correspondence from the owner of Bank of America lot across East John, and that should have been included in your packet. He's opposing the application citing concerns with parking and has indicated that there's already an issue with lack of parking for businesses on East John, and many customers park in the Bank of America parking lot. And two, the applicant has also applied for, applied to the city for a client-only parking zone for five spots in front of the building. There's no decision on this application at this time, pending the outcome of the decision of the special use permit here tonight. So with that, I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is in the audience as well.
I was making my rounds to Rice Street and Corbett, and though it was kind of convenient, two or three of the items were all right in this little area. And I happened to come down there and do a left turn back in, and it probably took me three or four minutes before I was comfortable backing back out, just because you can't see what's coming down around. And, and Rup Street is four-lane and very, I use that all, very busy through that, that whole strip as far as the other parking. But I just want to make that comment. Is there any other questions for, for staff?
You said that, so this particular applicant is, is applying to use the five spaces directly in front of?
Yes, and that's a separate process that would be dealt with in the City Treasurer's Office as well as our Transportation Division. But that's on hold based on what's, what happens here tonight.
But it's this applicant specifically, not RSVP Salon? I mean, it would-
No, it's this applicant specifically, yes.
Right now, they all share those five spaces, whatever businesses are in that building, correct?
That is correct. It's public parking. So at this point, there's, there's no way to control who parks there.
I wish there was a way they could just beam the kids onto that pad there. It would be very, quite simple if they could do that, but unfortunately, we can't. How large is the backyard area from?
Based on, based on my measurements, and this was on the GIS software, so it was approximately 800 square feet. But-
So how far from?
From Rup Street?
From the back of the building.
It's right up against the back of the building. Correct. Correct.
You can see a corner of the sidewalk there.
Right, okay.
But how, how does that play with the fire hydrant there? And the big transformer? I mean, it, it looks like it may be 800 square feet if you added those, but if you-
I think that's part of the fourplex, too. I'm not sure if that's part of this building or not. Is the property line for this building?
No, it's, the, the fourplex is on the property. So it's all on one property.
All on the same property, they're sharing.
Yes.
Because we approved that fourplex a number of years ago.
Right.
I remember there was another building there, I think a duplex they took down and built that.
Commissioner. Yes, I, when, when this was first brought to our attention, I, I just looked at it and, and I knew where the property was. And over the years, I have put in probably seven playgrounds for the state of Nevada, and this one is just in the wrong place, period. And that's what I just want to say, is it's the wrong place, it doesn't have the support it needs, people can't access it, and it is a concern for the safety of the children and safety of others, so.
There's the applicant here. Would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kristin Damara. I am the Education Manager for Community Services Agency in Reno. We put in this application for a couple reasons, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background and then talk about the parking and the playground area, what you have a concern about. I don't know if everyone knows kind of the quality of education in Nevada, but we are not very good when it comes to education services. And our program has been doing quality education in the community for 50 years. And just to give you a little bit of information, there are 647 licensed childcare centers in the state of Nevada. They brought about a few years ago a quality rating system to the state of Nevada called QRIS that gives star levels to quality care in the state. Out of 647 licensed childcare centers in Nevada, only 141 centers are starred, because it is a, it's not required. So of course, if you don't believe that you're running a high-quality center, you're not going to get assessed, because you're not going to get a low score. Out of those 141, only 12 centers in the state of Nevada have a five-star, which is sad. We just got our first stars for our program, and we got a five-star. So we are one of the highest-quality centers or early childhood programs in the state. Most of our programs in the state are two-stars. 55 centers in the state of Nevada are under quality. So we are trying to propose bringing quality care to Carson City. We've been doing this in Reno, Fernley, Fallon, Silver Springs, you name it, we've been doing it in northern Nevada. The state was given money four years ago because we were so low on quality care, and we were one of the only community programs to get that grant. Most of it was, it was gone to the school district, so it just speaks to quality. So we've been looking at spaces in Carson and looking at spaces in Reno and other things, and it's hard to find childcare centers, because you have to have an outdoor space, and you have to have kitchen, you have, have enough space for children to play and make it appropriate. And we have made spaces appropriate in 24 classrooms in 17 locations in the state. And so we know what we're doing. And so when we looked at this space, obviously parking, and from my understanding, one of the reasons that roundabout was put in, in that photo, was because there was some safety issues about parking, and that was the way that the city eliminated some of the parking issues or the safety issues. Like presented, we did put in the application to designate those five spaces just for us. We only have a minimum amount of kids. We only have anywhere between 15 to 20 kids, at the most 20. And then right next door, and the only other occupant in that space is a salon, and their hours vary, which are mainly in the afternoon, kind of evening hours. Right next door to the location is a designated parking spot for those locations. So there's a salon in there and a nail salon, and they have 12 parking spaces dedicated to the next-door location. So no other people should really have access to that or have a lot of parking issues with that. And then right beyond that, there's an empty lot, and then there's 10 additional spaces open. Bank of America, I guess, brought a concern, but they have their own designated parking lot. They have at least over 20 spots that I looked at, and the Waltons across the street is the only other business location that's in that vicinity. Right next door, as we talked about, on that street is the residential area with their own designated parking. And then right across from that or next to that is actual childcare center. They have no parking. I have a photo of it. They have just a roundabout where maybe one car can fit at a time, so we actually would have beyond more parking than the childcare center two buildings over. So just, we're trying to do what we can in that outdoor space. We've done renovations to parks, we've done renovations to spaces. We know what licensing needs to be met for requirements, and so we would make that space licensing met. We would put a fence there. If we need to put privacy slats, we would do that. We would put artificial turf in there, put appropriate shade in there, lighting, whatever we need to do. We're not at nighttime, we're only 8:00 to 1:30, so it shouldn't be any other issues. So we know standards in Nevada, and we have no problem making that space. Like I said, we're licensed in 17 other locations. So that's kind of, do you want to add anything? It's my boss.
I'm not, I'm not questioning at all your qualifications, and it's a nonprofit, and I think it's a wonderful thing. I just think it's a very bad location. That is public parking right now, so anyone on that street or anybody can go park there. And I just don't see any way to make a safe drop-off and pickup zone on that street. It just, to me, I don't see it any way possible, regardless of the small backyard or what you do for play area, et cetera. And again, as I say, we're not at all questioning your star qualities- I'm not, I'm not questioning at all your, your qualifications and it's a nonprofit and I think it's a wonderful thing. I just think it's a very bad location. That is public parking right now. So anyone on that street or anybody can go park there. And I just don't see any way to make a safe drop-off and pickup zone on that street. It just, to me, I don't see it any way possible, regardless of the small backyard or what you do for play area, et cetera. And again, as I say, we're not at all questioning your star qualities and your ability, you know, to run a daycare center. I just, myself, I just, you know, we've had a lot of daycare centers come before me in the last seven or eight years I've been here. And Montessori school was a parking issue we had to deal with up there and it was a difficult thing. But it, this just to me is, I don't see any way possible to make the parking work.
Even if the city grants us those five rented parking spaces in front?
I don't, still don't think it's enough when you've got 20 people that's going to be coming in to pick up their kids. You could have 15, 20 cars coming in at half hour, whatever, 8 o'clock and 1 o'clock or whatever. There still isn't adequate place for people to wait. And, and I've had my kids in daycare and I know in the places they were, they end up double parking and side by side and all that sort of stuff trying to do it. And it's just too busy. You have an area, they can't stop on Roop Street, there's no way you can stop anywhere on Roop Street. So you either have to try to use just that limited, small area or encroach on other people's parking areas, which you don't have control over the parents that are coming to pick up their kids. I just don't see a way that small parking section with another business there is feasible. But that's just my opinion. So, go ahead, Commissioner Doris.
Are the five spaces you're talking about, the five pictured in the bottom picture there with the stripes and everything, those constitute the five spaces?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean-
And then another 10, literally within a couple, I mean, there's literally 10 more additional spaces.
Sure, sure. My concern is, is the same, I think, as everybody's, is the traffic there, that intersection. We've, we've probably all been here since before they put that little roundabout or the, or the T that makes it so you can only turn one direction there. I rear-ended a cop at that intersection one time. I mean, it's a, it's a rough one. So even, even with those five spaces, I drove by there, I've driven by there twice and once was this afternoon because I don't, I, I wanted to double-check. It's just, man, I think probably another thing all of us have done is taken a quick right turn there to avoid that light. And it's, it's common and it's, I, I agree, it's unsafe. And I looked at the other, the other place down the road and they do have a little limited parking, but they're down away from that intersection. And I think that's the primary safety concern is the intersection, not so much whether or not, if it were somewhere else, you have enough space. It's that intersection. That's my concern. Thank you.
And it was, the reason that's there, designed like that, if it wasn't many years ago, you used to be able to do a two-way turn out of there. And there were many wrecks at that thing, people trying to cut across two lanes to get going. Or that's when the city re-appropriated that area. Anyway.
Would you consider if we put a security guard or someone there to monitor traffic?
Myself personally, it's just a terrible location for a daycare center. Just because of this traffic on both those streets, especially Roop and that one. And as I said, I experienced it, I went by there the other day and parked in that last spot and I had at least six cars come behind me and I'm trying to see out and back up. You'd almost be better off if it was lateral park, you know, you can just drive straight in front rather than going in. But that's what the best they could do when they did that. But in my mind, I just don't, the parking issue just nullifies that location. Other comments? Commissioner Board?
Did they say the Health Department has some comments for us?
Thank you. For the record, Dustin Booth, Carson City Health and Human Services. My comments were based on the application as submitted. Some of the comments could be clarified by providing additional information. They talk about food service, well, what type, how in-depth food service. They didn't describe what, what that was and what the needs would be for the type of food service. So some more conversation with the applicant could probably change my recommendation. I am, the one, the one map that they did submit, based on the, the way I measured it, I didn't find the 800 square feet. So obviously physically going out there and finding that, the 800 square feet to meet the requirements for, for licensing would be something, but based on the paper application, there was, I would just need a lot more clarifications to provide approval.
Well, and because they're probably, their fence could only go half the building, correct? Because they, behind the, behind the salon isn't necessarily part of that, that office part, so. Is there a minimum depth on something like that?
So, so between the state of Nevada childcare licensing and our Health Department, we would look at this facility and usually rely on licensing to make that determination of the square footage, but it's 37 and a half square foot per children for the outdoor space. That's the minimum space that you would need. So then you would-
Seven and a half, that's 20.
Yeah, would be 800 square feet.
Any other questions, public? Public comment? Anyone from the public wish to comment at this time? Come forward and state your name, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Scott McKenzie. I'm with Sierra Nevada Properties. We represent the owner. One of the issues that he had was the cement placing there. He lost three parking spaces because of that, which I don't think has helped this situation. But we are in support of this. This is a, I think, an important addition to the community. My son, when he was four years old, I adopted him, he was in a program such as this. It was extremely helpful to him in his life. And I think that we should try to figure out a way to make this work.
If, if I'm reading this floor plan correctly, it looks like the primary entrance to the daycare facility is going to be off of Roop Street.
In the back.
Yeah, or on the side of the building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So they're going to unload on-
They're going to unload on John and then-
That is the proposal.
And then turn around and go in?
That's where the ADA, that's where the ADA ran.
The children will be coming out on the walk on Roop Street before they go into the building.
Yeah, theoretically, the parents would park on John and the children would have to walk along the sidewalk, along Roop Street.
Either unsorted or if their parents left their cars, they have to park there, go in during the child and come back out and move their car for the next-
Correct.
-number of cars or whatever. Any further comment? I'll bring it back for further discussion or, I, I just, I, I can't support, I just, I think the program is wonderful, I think the people are great. I just think they need to find a location that is safer for children to be and more, it just doesn't make, see any way feasible to work to me. I move to deny SUP-18-137 a request for special use permit to allow for the establishment of a childcare center on property zone retail commercial located 640 East John Street based on the inability to make the findings in 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7. Of the seven findings, I, I also have, I don't see any way to make those five in the affirmative as stated in the staff report.
A second.
You have a second from Commissioner Sway and all in favor? Aye. This can be, this will go to the board of supervisors and, and-
This was a final action on the matter. If the applicant would like to appeal?
Likes to appeal.
There's a 10-day appeal period. The appeal is to the board of supervisors. You can contact me or Heather and we can walk you through that. Mr. Chair, while my mic's on, can I have a five-minute break?
Yes, thank you.
We'll reconvene the Planning Commission meeting after our short break. Moving on, P eight SUP dash one zero dash one one five dash two for possible action. A considerate request to modify a special use permit for an asphalt plant specifically modifying the hours to allow startup of equipment from 5:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. with gates open to customers at 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. and with the ability to run night exclusively for municipal and state work. This subjected property is owned General Industrial and is located at eight oh one three Highway fifty east, APN zero zero eight dash six one one dash three five. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, you received two pieces of light material at your desk. There's also a copy at the back table for the public to review. On January twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit for an asphalt plant and aggregate crushing facility. At the time of that approval, the conditions of approval specified hours of operation Monday through Saturday, seven a.m. to six p.m., and Sundays on an emergency-only basis. The applicant is now requesting to modify the hours to five thirty a.m. to six p.m. I'm sorry, five thirty a.m. to six a.m. for warm-up of equipment, six a.m. to seven p.m. Monday through Saturday for operations, and night work on Sundays exclusively for state and municipal work. In talking to the applicant, he indicated there are large road projects going on on U.S. fifty from Stagecoach to Silver Spring and the South Carson Street project. Both projects, because I did contact our Public Works Department as well as N.D.A., both projects will be primarily day work with occasional night work. So I did check on that to see what they anticipate the schedule to be. I will mention, we can't control where the job site is once the truck picks up the asphalt. We can't follow the truck to see if it's going to a private site or a public site. So I am going to suggest immediately that we not even consider anything that would be based on who the recipient of the asphalt is, because we just can't control it. Staff is supporting up, warming up the equipment at five thirty a.m. to six a.m. Monday through Saturday, opening the gates at six a.m. with hours of operation Monday through Saturday, six a.m. to six p.m., and work on evenings and Sundays up to thirty times a year, provided their seventy-two-hour notice given to the Community Development Director. But this recommendation is made subject to conditions that I really, I want to speak to, because I really feel like we need to revisit the conditions of approval to make the seven required findings a fact. Before I get there, I want to talk about some procedural stuff. In considering this modification to the special use permit, you're still considering the seven required findings a fact. So it's just like when you did it the first time, you have to go through those findings. You may modify the conditions of approval as necessary to make the required findings. I did have the question posed to me, can we just rescind the special use permit and shut down the operation? No, that's not what's before you. There's a lawful entitlement. The applicant is operating a business. He is allowed to continue operating that business subject to the conditions of approval that were put into place in two thousand and eleven, and we could leave the hours of operation as approved in two thousand and eleven. If you vote no, the default is, he stays with exactly what he has today. The use, I want to talk about the use. Although the special use permit was approved in two thousand and eleven, the asphalt plant part of the use didn't establish until July two thousand and sixteen. I'll say it got off to a rocky start. NDEP has assessed over sixty thousand dollars' worth of fines related to air quality issues. The city has issued three notices of code violation for operating outside the hours of operation. In between February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, so a seven-month period, the city received fifty-six complaints. Those complaints were primarily related to hours of operation and odors. I said it got off to a rocky start. But on October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Chief of the Bureau of Air Pollution Control of NDEP wrote a letter stating that Tahoe Western Asphalt is in good standing with respect to the air quality operating permit. However, there are some payment of the fines that are outstanding to NDEP. So I think the rocky start has been somewhat addressed, but I don't think it's been fully addressed. I want to focus on finding number two of the seven findings. I have it up on the board. Finding two says, "The proposed use will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood, and will cause no noise, vibration, fumes, odors, dust, glare, or physical activities." This use creates odors. The recipient of these odors are primarily homeowners to the east across the county line in Lyon County. Now, the back, because I, oops, I have a map to help orient you. Here you can see the project location, and you can see the houses located in Lyon County to the east. The NDEP staff has explained that the primary source of the odors is the volatile organic compounds. NDEP has also advised, and I want to publicly thank the staff of Air Quality Control and NDEP, they really helped me understand how this particular asphalt plant works and kind of what the impacts were to the community and how those could be potentially addressed. So they've been very cooperative. They had a similar problem in Fernley. In Fernley, the operator installed a regenerative thermal oxidizer after the bag house, and there has not been an odor complaint in two years. I also met with Eric Florio, and so I should thank him. He's an air quality specialist with the Business Environmental Program at UNR. So I went to the folks who are the regulators at the state level, and I went to sort of academia. Eric conducted his own independent research, because I wanted to understand the odors better. And he advised that there's an odor suppressant that's an additive to the asphalt mix, and it doesn't compromise the asphalt. He identified two additives that, based on his research, seemed to be effective. Ecosorb and asphalt solutions. The applicant has expressed a willingness to incorporate the Ecosorb into his operations. Also, per NDEP, other steps that will help address the odor are installing a roof-like structure over where the truck, the chute is to put the asphalt in the truck, installing a water fogging system at drop points when the material drops to a different part of the equipment, but it's exposed to the air, and maintenance of a vent condenser that's been installed. It has to be maintained, and that will help address the odors as well. So to make finding two, I believe modifications to the existing systems have to be installed so that we address odors. I am suggesting that we start with the Ecosorb, and following the manufacturer's guidelines on the utilization of that, the roof over the chute, the water fogging system, and the vent condenser. Since the success is not known, since I don't have any local success stories like I do in the Fernley case, I am recommending that the special use permit come back to the Planning Commission one year, and that will be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to understand the adequacy of these revised conditions of approval. You received a memo from me identifying NDEP's input regarding hours of operation for air quality attainment. NDEP advised that operations during the daytime could not exceed eleven hours, and at night, they could not exceed five hours. Yet, I've recommended a twelve-hour window, daytime window. I've discussed this with the applicant, and he's indicated that if he were to be open from six to six, he would not be operating continuously during that period, and he didn't believe there would be a conflict. Having said that, in the memo of October twenty-second, I do suggest revisions to conditions twelve and thirteen, and those conditions are intended to provide clarification as well as to be very clear that the hours of operation established by the city by no means supersede any regulations that NDEP has in place for hours of operation. So the more restrictive would control. With that, I am happy to answer questions. The applicant, Robert Matthews, is present.
I'll start. I was here for this when this first came up in two thousand and eleven. I'd just gotten on the commission in January of that year. I remember it quite well, because I had worked, when I got out of the service, I worked at an asphalt privately-owned company doing driveways, oil seal, all that stuff for a couple of years. And there was concerns at that time, and I remember when it was brought to us at that time. It was brought forward in two thousand and eleven. I believe we may have, because we hadn't notified the people on the other side, because there was nothing out there for Carson City, I believe it was tabled possibly for a month and then readdressed and redone later. I can't swear to that. But there was a concern for the people down in the other county that hadn't been notified. So we had basically, when it came to us, there was going to be the soup, we had, odors came up, and it was going to be this super oxidizer machine, whatever, that was going to, you'd have no odor, no nothing, and all this, you know? And I guess it was approved, if we would have done it right, we probably should have put conditions that equipment had to be used. I don't think that was done at the time. I followed up for a couple of years after two thousand and eleven going out that way and had not seen the plant, so I figured it would come back to us. But because it was a combination rock-crushing asphalt, that's how it ended up, starting in sixteen, even though we originally approved it in eleven. So I just wanted to clarify a little history on that and bring that up to speed before, for the staff and other people that are here, my fellow commissioners. Any other questions or comments for staff?
When, in dealing with either End Up or the gentleman up at UNR, were any, within the odors, is anything identified as being toxic, you know, that perhaps might not be contained by the additive, the suppressant?
NDEP does have regulations on odors, and thank you for that question, because I actually meant to proactively address that. However, until very recently, NDEP did not have the instrument to measure odors. They now have the instrument to measure odors, and the facility has not violated NDEP's requirements. Having said that, there's NDEP's requirements vis-à-vis odors, and then there's odors that are just a nuisance. And so I'm suggesting that we don't limit odors to the realm of NDEP regulations, and that we attempt to incorporate either the additive or the equipment to address odor so that people, so that we can make finding number two. But the shorter answer is, NDEP has not identified a violation of their noise, or their odor regulations.
And in dealing with UNR, I mean, there was nothing ever mentioned as far, it was just about the smell. It was nothing about toxicity or anything like that?
Yes, the folk, well, and again, I want to speak just briefly to air quality. I haven't talked about that. NDEP enforces air quality, which would be, there's the attainment level for air quality, and so that's why they're saying it can only run eleven hours during the day, five hours at night, so that the air quality stays at the attainment level. So when the air quality becomes unhealthy, it's out of attainment, and that's an NDEP regulation. I'm not making any effort to address that. I think that is solidly in NDEP's realm. And right now, they have heard the letter from the bureau chief, the operations are within compliance with NDEP's regulations, with the exception that they're behind on the payments for the fines.
My last question was actually, you just led right into it, how far behind, if we know, and how much?
I actually don't have those numbers.
To further clarify, if we do nothing, or if we disapprove this, he just, the hours of operation, because the hours of operation were a major concern back in two thousand and eleven, because of, you know, trucks, et cetera, running and that sort of thing. So, but if we go and open this and address the chemical, and that doesn't work, and I don't know that we need a year, I think we could tell in three or six months when he starts using it, whether there's going to be odor from it or not. But that we can discuss further, because I think this needs to be addressed. If the chemical doesn't work, can we then stipulate he either puts that scrubber machine on or can't operate, or what would be our ramifications?
The reason I'm suggesting that come back in a year is because I'm not a hundred percent certain the additive will work. And I have included the information about the equipment in Fernley, because that's a piece of equipment that NDEP specifically is aware of that facility. They know that facility had odor complaints from residents, and they know that the odor complaints stopped with the installation of that piece of equipment. So my intent in saying we can come back in a year is if the proposed conditions of approval to address finding number two are not achieving the desired result, I want the ability to say, you know what, finding two's not met. That didn't work. We need to look at a better mechanism.
And again, that means the people out there have to wait a year. Can't we, wouldn't we know in six months, or whatever, if it was working or not, I would think, or a shorter period of time? Why, is it something we normally wait a year, or whatever?
Actually, I don't, I never like to bring something back, in fact. I hate doing, oh, it's good for a year, and we have to come back. But I think this one, the odor complaints have been so severe that we can't ignore it, we have to address it. And I'd like to give the applicant, I want the applicant to succeed, honestly. I want him to be able to operate in a way that's not going to be creating conflicts with the neighbors, and I think that's achievable. One year is not the magic number. If you'd like to see it in six months, we can think about that. The one reason we may not want to go that quick is they tend to do less work in the cold-weather months. So we may want to see the full spectrum.
Actually, you do your crack ceiling in the colder months, because it widens and you can fill in that sort of thing. I remember.
Another thing that, just to add, it comes to mind, as someone who operates a business, that you have to buy expensive machinery. I know part of what we're saying is you have to get the sprayers, you have to get the roofing thing done. That, I mean, I don't know that industry, but that could be six months to build that machinery in general. So maybe if there, is there a way we could say additive tomorrow, and then, you know, machinery we revisit within a year, or something like that?
I've talked to the applicant. The items about the roof over the chute area and the water foggers, NDEP intends to include those in its revised permit as well. The applicant has seen the conditions of approval. He's in, he'll tell you himself, he's in agreement with the conditions of approval. So, and I think to a certain extent, a lot of those improvements have already started being implemented through the applicant's work with the staff at NDEP. But he can speak to you about how quickly he thinks he can get up and running on that.
Has noise been an issue?
Actually, I heard somebody in the audience just now say yes. I'm going to say no. I actually talked to our code enforcement folks, I talked to NDEP, because I had that very specific question as well, because I thought, of course, it must be noisy. And I actually accidentally started representing that noise was a de facto problem, and was advised, no. It's really, the issues are the air quality, and they do a smoke test, and the smoke was visible, thus the violations with NDEP, the hours of operation, and the odors.
Okay. The only reason I ask is, I know from previous experience that in Lyon County, with an operation very close by to this, to these folks at Art Wilson's operation, noise was an issue, and the county established hours of operation based upon the noise complaints, in addition to the other odor complaints that were involved in that. But noise was a big issue, and the hours were set. And I just wonder if maybe, since it's right on the county line, that it might be appropriate to us, to check with Lyon County and find out what their hours of operation are.
I think during the public hearing, we'll hear from, I'm sure, the residents, and they'll advise of any noise concern. So I think that will be good input, and maybe, maybe my takeaway isn't accurate. I think it is, but it may not be. The other thing is, I did notify Lyon County. They didn't provide any comments formally, but I can certainly solicit input about how they're, how they're handling hours of operation at their asphalt plants.
Before you make a judgment, excuse me for jumping in. Okay. Before your judgment, though, because he has not.
Everybody will have a chance to speak. Right now, we'll be through our process. Okay.
My name is Robert Matthews. I'm the managing general partner and owner of Tahoe Western Asphalt. There's a lot of clarification that needs to be said, because even your comments are way, aren't correct. The reason it was tabled five years ago is that we had also permitted for four wind turbines, which was approved. That's the reason the project was tabled. These guys talking about air quality and noise, as it sounds. First of all, we did a noise study on it. It's less than seventy-two decibels, which means it's less than the ambient traffic going down the road, like a truck. It's a thirty-five-acre site, which by the time anything hits their property, it's totally quiet. When we want to talk about odors, the state finally bought a machine, which is called the Nasal Ranger. A Nasal Ranger allows the state to take an air quality sample and dilute it with normal air and come up with a factor. Every time they've called in the last three months, the state has gone down there and checked air, there is no smell at all coming out of our plant. We've lowered, we've lowered, lowered the temperature of our tanks. We have the reports on, we have the state NDEP reports, Hope House them. We've lowered the report, we've put the roof on, we've bought a vent condenser, we've had the fogging system. But we do have a chemical that, it's a chemical produced by a company called Standard Oil. Obviously, we talked about oil, right? It's a company called OMI Industries, it's out of Columbus, Ohio. It's called Ecosorb, which I found, and we have it sitting there, and we're going to start adding it. But there is no smell. We've welcomed everybody to come out and visit the site, walk around, we'll explain to you what to do. They just don't show up. Here's the problem. Two years ago, I go home to Florida in the winter, we turn the power off, we turn the tanks off, forty complaints over the winter about smells, noise, and dust. We weren't even operating, there's no, there's no, there's no chemical on site, there's no oil on site. There's nothing I can do about these people not calling, and people listen to it. But I will not be slandered, or we'll hold one of them liable, we'll see one of them. We've installed cameras now on the stack, we have total perimeter security system. Next time it happens, we'll see them in district court, because we've done everything we possibly can here to make this thing work. We haven't had a violation in over fourteen months. Our Stackhouse test, which checks air quality control, was twenty percent of the whole limit we could have. Instead of being a hundred percent, we're twenty percent, which is one-fifth of the particles, one-fifth. have, instead of being 100%, we're 20%, which is one-fifth of the particles, one-fifth of the NOx, the CO2, which go in the air. We're in a spotless, clean facility right now. We did have some problems with an operator, which I, which I fired, who cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines and penalties. And by the way, we're behind one payment, we set up a payment plan, $2,300. As anybody knows, it's been the asphalt business, you supply a lot of product and don't get paid for it for a while. We have, you know, multiple six figures owed to us. And, you know, that shouldn't have even been in the list, because that has nothing to do with compliance. Compliance has to be with, with procedure, not, not fines. And we will make that payment. But to sit here and listen to these guys continue to complain over something that doesn't exist, come on out to the side, I welcome all you guys, I'll buy you lunch. Come out and walk around, smell it for yourself. There's no smell. But there's nothing I can do to keep these guys from calling every day, right? Somebody's going to listen to them. But the state can't find what they're talking about. Thank you.
Are you the same, you were there in '11, then, you're the same gentleman?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so the tur, just to clarify, the turbines, I remember, was that?
We were going to put up four wind turbines, and that was back?
To produce your own power, correct?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And we had a problem with the airport. I actually got their flight pattern design form, came back with FAA approval, because they couldn't get it done, and we got it done. To our, we sell a permit for it, it's expired, we have to revisit, but it's hard to get it funded right now.
So the plant you installed was the one you were going to install when you came before?
Same plant, we were just going to use different power source. Now we use Lyon Power, it's the same thing, it's run by propane, it's the same plant.
Okay, thank you. Are you good with the revised and the condition?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sir.
All of them is written?
You know, we want to continue to supply the mom and pops in Carson City like we do. We sell, we'll probably sell 50,000 tons this year, but 40,000 is to Armac construction, you know, Qualcon, you know, Vega paving. The, the mom and pops, they can't get into the big plants. We make mix for everybody, every day. Doesn't matter how much, what ton, we just make mix.
And that's what we were doing, mostly small driveways, you know, small operation kind?
The big, the big companies in Reno Granite charges them another $10 a ton. We sell to Carson City, we're saving them a ton of money, we're producing a ton of taxpayer money, and we'll, we'll generate probably $350,000 a share in tax for the city. It's massive. Is there, the claim was made that the last, and maybe you clarify, the last so many times that complaints have happened, the state, NDEP has come out, done their nasal inspector test, and figured out that there's no smell. Can we verify, is that, do you have anything pertaining to that?
What, what you have is, you have a couple things on the record in your packets. You have the reports that Robert submitted from NDEP, they're field reports that demonstrate compliance, they're relatively recent. There's the letter from the bureau chief of air quality, indicating it's in compliance. And I have met with staff at NDEP who do the enforcement, and they have advised that with the new odor equipment, not sure what it's called. There has a-
It's a nasal ranger.
Thank you, nasal ranger. There has not been a violation of their code. Now, having said that, our staff, our code enforcement staff, we have reports from residents, and, and D E P, they have been out to the, the residential area in Mound House, and they have smelled asphalt over there. So I, I'm going to say, I don't, I believe there really is a smell, I mean, I don't know the frequency of the smell. And as I understand it, the applicant's receptive to the recommendations in the staff report with the Ecozorb, which actually, independent of Robert having found that, because what Robert actually told me when I was on site with him, is he said, there's this product by Standard Oil, but you didn't know the name of it at that time. And then, independent of that, the gentleman from UNR did his research and came back with that product, and then Robert came forward with that product name. I was like, oh, this is good, it's the exact same product.
You tried a masking agent called Ash Cherry, I'm not, that's the name, A.S. Cherry, it's a, it's a South American company, and it was a masking agent. It made everything smell like cherry, they didn't like that either. This isn't a masking agent, this is actually a chemical reduction, this is actually, I can send them the oil we're producing, and they can produce a chemical that will invert the smell, it kills the smells.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So just, just to be clear, I, I think I got it, but there's a difference between a violation of the clean air quality, which you have, you are very successful at, and a perception that there's a smell. And one of the conditions of approval is the, this additive that will eliminate any, or it's supposed to eliminate all the smell, and which may or may not have happened in the past. But, but going forward, you know, we can, we, I don't want to sit here and argue about what happened three years ago anymore.
There's no reason to.
Yeah, so-
We have a valid permit, which is still valid out today, no matter what happens. We're not going anywhere.
So, but we have, I, I think there's a difference between what the, the air quality people say with their, with their sprayer, and a perception that there's a bad odor. You know, so, and, and as my understanding is, what we're talking about is a way to eliminate the bad odor. No, but I don't think anybody's questioning the fact of the air quality, it's just the smell.
That's, that's not true, but we'll go with that, because I was just playing for putting ash on her property.
And you're, and you're, and you're willing to go forward and try the chemical, and if that doesn't work, you'll come back?
We're going to go forward and make it work, no matter what we have to do. I mean, but you know.
Hi. I use a lot of asphalt. And so one of the things that I know is that when the winter comes on, usually you guys shut down the plant and go to Florida. So my question is, is if we're looking at a timeline to come back and revisit this, when do you anticipate that your plant will be down, and for how long?
It's usually right after Thanksgiving, we take off. But here's, here's the problem with the site, we have Carson City's at 4,686 feet, right, Mills Park. Our site up there's about 400 more feet, so we're roughly about a mile high. The problem with it is, is we're right where the inversion starts. So when those tanks fester at night, it has nowhere to go. So we fire the stack up in the morning, you actually see the hot air go straight up, it hits the elevation, and it takes off, and it skiers. You can watch it, it's like it's hitting, it's like it's hitting a roof. There's nothing we can do about our location. But we have General Industrial zoning, which is the most lenient zoning. There's one other place that has General industrial zoning, it's the corner of Sutro Terrace and Gonai. Imagine if I tried to put a plant up there? If that's where I'm allowed to, I'm allowed to. You know, this, this, the plant was owned by, the area was owned by a guy named Mr. John Serpere years ago. Him and Mr. Maddox traded out of the deal. They've been up there since early 80s. We actually produced the material that made Carson Highlands years ago, Eagle Valley put the first vase in, and then I think Marv McCory took over. I mean, we've been there forever, we have the zoning rights we need in place, and we're willing to enforce them if we have to. We've done everything we possibly can for our neighbors. Pick and pull isn't here, the dump isn't here, ABC Heating and Sheetmail's not here, Ernie, of course, go, all our surrounding neighbors, they're not here, they don't have any complaints about us. Right? And there's over 1,000 people in their neighborhood, and there's only 10 people here tonight, they've never met the requirements for the petition, which is over half the people have to sign off on it. I've asked the state for it, never seen it, you know, that's the requirement. They can call all they want, it, it's when people actually listen to them after a while, will we know they're not telling the truth? That's the problem, that's why I'm going to be slandered, and this is what I'm liable, it's, it's not right.
So as Commissioner Preston was asking, at what point will you then fire up again, or get running, or get probably?
By March, it, it just depends, there might be a couple select days in the winter that we run like we did this year. But three or four days, that's it. Probably March or April, we fire back up again.
So if we had you come back again next October, or whatever, that would give you sufficient time to use your chemicals?
Absolutely.
And you probably wouldn't start using those chemicals till you fire up again?
I'll put them in tomorrow, I have a bucket sitting there. There you go. The problem with it is, is in the winter, it's real difficult with that site and elevation. In the summer, no one really complains, you know, because of the winds, it involves, but right where the ceiling is, it goes right into their neighborhood.
It hits inversion, and then the winds take it that way.
It takes you to go straight across. You can actually sit and watch it, I mean, come out in the morning, I've invited everybody to come out, come on out. We'll explain it all to you with showers, I've asked all of them to come on out.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, before we start, as you come up, would you please print your name and state your name, state whatever you have to say, let's not, hopefully, if you agree with somebody else, just mention you agree, and-
Okay.
If you mention you, you know, agree with someone or whatever, so we aren't hopefully here too, too late.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Judy Lucas. I live in the area he was talking about. I got to tell you, I never call anyone a liar, but he is a liar. He has lied about this.
Okay, okay, let's keep this civil, please.
Okay, who, I've got some questions first, sir. Who was the one that allowed him to do this?
Just a moment, just a moment. Let me clarify something, okay? You folks are allowed to come up and make your statement, we are not going to comment on your statements.
I know, I know that.
Take this time, okay?
We've been to the legislature three times.
But we're going to keep, we're going to keep this affable and courteous to everybody, okay? Us, and the applicant, and yourselves?
So it's okay for him to say about us, but we can't?
What he said was, he's offered to have you come out, or whatever, that's fine.
No, he hasn't. Okay, first of all, I would like to know what board, or what state allowed him, gave him the permission to build where he did. Who was that? Do you know? We don't know. We're trying to find out. It was you guys? Okay. And the inspector that went out to inspect it, I don't want the inspector's name, I don't mean that, I mean, what, what group sent him out there, and he didn't see us, see all of us? What organization was that from? We know there's a problem that, we used to be Carson City, now it's Mound House, but we use Carson City zip code. But when my husband and I moved there 27 years ago, it was Carson City. And then now it's gone to Mound House. But the inspector, when he came out, he stopped it, right there. And he didn't even acknowledge, and we're trying to get the report of that. The other thing that I would like to say, everybody, everybody that is here is from our housing. Yes, we were hoping for a bigger group, but people are afraid to come forward. They're having a terrible time with children, getting sick. I'm trying to be very nice, but this man is very nasty. He does not care what these fumes are doing to us. I only have a portion of my right lung, and there are times when the smell is so bad that if I step outside, it's like I'm going to be sick, and I can't, I can't breathe. So there's something more that he is doing to create these smells. They're not a regular asphalt smell, there's something else there. We think he's burning stuff from the mines. There's something that is making it strong here and horrible here. You can tell him that he can go from eight to eight, and he'll go any time, day or night he wants to do it. If you see the reports that I handed out to you, there are times there when we called in, when it was the middle of the night. Now tell me how you pour asphalt at 11:30 at night, or 2:30 in the morning. How, how do you do that? And he wants to change the time to 5:30, he already does that. You don't have to give him any time, he already is doing that. And, that's right, no one, we can call, and we know they're not at work. So he, he knows the game too, he plays the game. He knows that he can do it before the offices open up. Now I will give him credit for one thing, it's not all day like it used to be. It's like half hour here, half hour there, and he knows by the time we smell, we report, people go out, he stops. Now, this machine that they're doing, is it locked up to where he can't get to it, or he can't do anything to it? We've, several of us have offered to let the machine be on our property, in a, in a locked up thing, so we can get those smells. We are right up against the hill that it comes over, that area right there, we're right up against there, we don't see the smoke, but we get the smell. Now, the other thing that I am very, very concerned about, and it hasn't been brought up, he had a fire a year ago. Now what if that fire, and thank God for the firemen, they put it out before it got to that 10,000 pound propane that he's got, tank? What do you think would have happened to our houses? It'd have been like an earthquake, we'd all come off of our foundations, and the fire. Now, he doesn't know what he's doing. He thinks he does, but he doesn't, nor do we. I mean, we, none of us are, are on asphalt. But you've got people sitting right here tonight that have had to go because of their breathing, because of cancer. Last year, we lost three dogs to lung cancer. Now there is some kind of a white ash, and I talked to Chad this morning at NDP, N-D-E-P, and he was going to try to find, he hadn't heard that yet. And I said, well, we're just all kind of discovering this. It's, it's a very fine film, and we would like to have a test made of it to see what it is. In the mornings after he goes during the night, our cars have got this white film all over it. Now, we don't know what it is, and we're just all kind of now discovering this film that we're breathing in, that our kids are breathing in, plants are dying, okay? But the most thing that my husband and I are worried about is the fire. If he has another one, we're all history, because it'll, it'll destroy everybody around us. So we're trying to get him out of here. We want him out. He has no right to be doing this to all of us. He needs to go out towards Fallon, where it's all open, there's no housing, there's no nothing there. Let him go out there and do it. I hate to put anybody out of business, but this man needs to go. And we're begging, begging you. Now, the next step for us is a class action suit, which will involve him and Carson City. And that's going to be our next step, to try to get rid of this man. Now, as far as the dirt that he does, that's fine, that's not a problem. We have no problem with that. He does not contain the smell. Pictures have gone to code enforcement of huge, huge smoke coming. There was one time I was coming back from Dayton, and I thought the place was on fire, the mountain was on fire, it was his smoke. So you've got to do something to this man, please, we're begging you. We don't know what else to do. And we're asking that you put a stop to him. Thank you.
Judy, will you say your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Judy Lucas. I'm on the legislature minutes, three times. Thank you. Thank you, Hope.
First of all, I want to apologize for, for spurting out like that to everybody here. My name is Melissa Fraker, and I've lived in Mound House for 30 years, my family's been here for my whole life. I remember when this plant was just a gravel pit, okay, before that 80, before our place was built, okay? Because I was on that job too. I was a construction worker for over 30 years. And I've lived there for 30 years, I've raised my kids there. This whole thing has been just awful. We started smelling it, we had no idea. I'm going, wow, there's a lot of flipping paving going on in this whole thing, you know? And, and then we find out that it's an asphalt company, all right? Then we found out that he is operating it whenever he wants to operate it, okay? We went to a meeting at the, the legislature building with, with the environmental people, okay? We got really nowhere there. We got really nowhere there. They, they told him he had to build a hood over this asphalt thing, which he did, okay? Did not deter any odors or anything. And he also did that chemical, probably six months ago was supposed to add it. He never did that. He's been fined numerous, numerous times on not complying with the regulations, you know? I mean, we've, we, we can't live like this, you guys. None of you could live like this, when you've been in a clean air for 30 years. I've lived there, and I want to continue staying there. I've, I'm, now I'm raising my grandchildren there. They have to cover up their faces to go get on the bus. My, my plants are dying, my trees are dying. He is not doing what he says he's doing. He might say, "Yeah, I'm gonna go do this." He doesn't do it. We need your help. I don't even know how this was even planned to go, nobody even looked in the location of the people that were on the other side of the hill. Nobody even notified us. We didn't even know anything about it. And, and, oh, I'm just gonna, I did do a petition, and I have over 100 and something signatures back in 2012, 11. I do have that. I need a, to, to get a, a copy to you guys, because the, the environmental people also, I gave copies to it. And I don't know why none of you have, have received that. We have, we have sent out so many different, or tried to have different avenues to help us, to have him comply with, you know? I, I don't want to put him out of business, but my goodness, we cannot live like that as human beings. You cannot open your windows. It comes and goes in spurts, and then it stays in your homes. I mean, you, you, the minute you do, you have to go close up every window in your house, and hopefully that it didn't, you know, you, you got everything before the smell comes in. You can't be outside barbecuing with your family and, and enjoying life. There is no life at my home anymore. None. I mean, we have to stay in the house with the air conditioning on, okay? Is that, you can't, I can't live like that, you guys? You know, I'm already stuck in a wheelchair, not all the time. I can walk, I can do everything, but my life, as I knew it, was gone. And then now my life, as I know it, is more gone? I mean, how much more can somebody take, you guys? Before you're whole, you just wanna go blow your flipping head off? You know what I mean? But I am serious. You know, you, you can't live like that, when somebody does not cooperate with, he says he does, he says he does, but you guys look into it, he does not. He does not. Please help us. And, let him go back to a gra, excuse me, a gravel pit. The gravel pit was fine. His dad or his uncle owned it, it was fabulous. But once he put that asphalt plant there, our whole lives went to heck. Well, I appreciate and I apologize again to you for spurting out like that. And I know you guys, if you come out there, I'm telling you, you'll understand. You will understand.
Hi there, my name's Emmett Bishop. I'm part of the community out there at Mound House. First of all, I want to commend the board here, the planning commission, on your due diligence you do. I sat over here and I heard different cases of people's concerns on traffic and turnarounds and so forth, and I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate you went and did some research at Fernley. I was at Fernley, I had a chocolate milkshake right across the street from the plant, 'cause there's a little stop there, you can go there, and I had my shake out in my truck, and there was no smell. I said, "Man, look at that, no smell." But, you know, my concerns, I want to be factual, I don't want to be confrontational, I don't want to get personal, that isn't what it's about. But, traffic, traffic on Highway 50 is a mess. Especially there at the bridge, especially, and he's just to the west of the bridge. Right there in Mound House, as you know, we had a fatality while back. They hit horses all the time, nobody does the speed limit. This gentleman wants to open more hours. He wants people to come earlier, to get more people, more traffic. So I don't know, I would think a traffic study would be in line. I'm talking to the planning commission, sir. And I heard about his financial estrades, arrives, he's made arrangements and brought it up. Well, if his business plan needs more hours to be profitable, something's wrong with his business plan. More hours, and more hours is gonna be more problems for these people, and I'm part of those people, 'cause of the traffic, and that will create more and more problems. Okay? So, yeah, I'm getting a little lost here. Oh, he painted himself as a good neighbor. He is not. But I'm not here to get personal or anything, but he has problems. That's why he got levied fines, that's why those people are on him all the time. I haven't called the pollution. I went and talked to them, met with these people, but I didn't call them or nothing. And, you know, I understand asphalt, 45 degrees and rising type thing. You know, he's going after bigger traffic, more traffic, 'cause his business is being more successful, get where out of town and do what needs to be done. Looked like a problem got started right here in Carson City, when Mound House used to be Carson City. Then the lion went over the, the bridge there, and that's creating problems. I'm hoping, I don't think you guys were involved, but a mistake has been made, let's make it right. I don't need to tell you how bad that stuff is on lungs, as you can tell, I have a breathing problem. But, that's why I'm here, I guess. Support them and tell you like I feel. And, and I thank you for your patience and time. Thank, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Laura Webster. I purchased a home in Mound House in 1997. I'm a retired state worker. I raised two UNR graduates at this location, and one of the great things we loved about being in that neighborhood was the air, it was clean, and yes, the wind always did come, you know, from the west to the east, but it's still doing that. It's doing that today. And what it's bringing with it is this tarry, disgusting smell that gets in your nose, it gets in your mouth, you can taste it for like a half an hour after it's gone, supposedly gone. It, it, it comes in your windows, you close the door, you close the windows, and you can still smell it. And yes, I have called quite a bit. Now I have, my son has purchased a property right up the street, and I have two grandkids who are now smelling this on their way to school. They smell it, they taste it, it's, it's nasty. There's not, it's not right. It's not clean, it can't be good for you. I know what good means, and good doesn't smell like that. You know, yeah, plants die. I, I've been in the hospital twice in the past couple months. I have an autoimmune disorder, like lupus, and it's affected my health. It's affecting every, everyone that is there is affected by it. Some people aren't here because, for whatever reasons, they're probably working, 'cause, you know, we're all working people. I, I feel terrible for the people who are living there, including myself and my neighbors, because we used to enjoy such, one of the things, like I said, was just the air, it was wonderful. What I feel about this compliance is, and I, I, I get the, the NDP or whoever they are with their gas analyzer, nasal, whatever you call it, inhaler thing, and it's so random. And this is how he gets away with it. It's like every other morning, it's sometimes it's between 5:30 and 6:30, sometimes it's when the kids are at the bus stop, it can be in the middle of the day. You know, I used to enjoy going out and doing work in the garden. I have to plan around this now, to go out to my garden. I, if I go out and it's there, I can't go out there and work in my garden. I have to literally wait. I, I don't know what kind of a life that is for us out there, and it's all because we're downwind, you know? If, if this was like further south somewhere, nobody would really care. But literally, it goes right over the hill and bam, right into our neighborhood. It never goes the other way, the wind never has, I don't think, and Mound House has never gone from east to west, it always goes the other way. So we're just struggling with the fact that this seems to be such a difficult problem for everyone who lives there, and for someone to realize that we're people, and we have children, we have grandchildren, we have pets, we have property that we've paid taxes on, and, and we're pretty much up to our, we're up to here with it. I'm not gonna get personal either with this gentleman, I don't know him, I just think that his business practices aren't correct, and I, I, I would really like for everyone to take a second look at this, for the safety of not just the children, there's a lot of elderly people, including myself, that live there, that, you know, and, like, we don't have enough problems already, but when you can't enjoy, you have no enjoyment of your own property anymore because of this random, stinky, polluting air, then there's something wrong with that. And thank you so much for your, your time, and, good evening.
Hi, I'm Bob Lucas, and of course, we live in Mound House, but, you know, you can go up to that plant, 'cause I've gone up there to take pictures. And you can go up there, and you can't smell it there. But you go indoor, and if you want to smell it, you come into our neighborhood, and you can smell it. Travis and Chad have both caught him, they come to our, from NDP, come into our neighborhood, and they can smell it. Hope's worker, Bill, has caught him before, at 5:30 in the morning, but nobody does anything. Now he says there's no smell. Well, I'd like to make an offer, I'll go pick him up when he's burning that garbage and bring him over to our neighborhood. He knows exactly what's going on. Problem is, he doesn't care, as long as he's making money. Now I don't know anything about asphalt either, but if he can comply when they're there, why can't he comply when they're not there? So there's something about the money, sometimes, sometimes the fix is, is more expensive than just letting it go, but this is not right. I mean, I get up early in the morning, at 3:30, 4:30 in the morning, I work out outside, and I've smelled it then. I have to shut the door to my storage unit where I have my, my equipment, and I've seen it 11:30 at night, at 3:30 in the morning, and you can see the smoke, but it blows over the hill, it doesn't burn there where he's at. You can go up there all day long, you won't smell it. Now my wife worked for Burtonelli at the, at the end of Deer Run Road, he had an asphalt plant, well, you guys probably know that. She worked there, and she couldn't smell anything. And Tim used to go out every day to make sure everything was up to code, but you can give him an order to do something, but he doesn't do it. He does it when they're there, but like he said, you know, the smell is different from the complying with the Clean Air Act. This is not right, I mean, we're, I mean, because we're in a poor neighborhood doesn't give him the right to pollute it. But he won't come, he knows what's going on in the neighborhood, 'cause I can guarantee he's been there. That's what you guys need to do. Come over at 6:30 in the morning, 8 o'clock in the morning, 'cause see, he knows that working people, if they work for the state, the city, or the federal government, like I did, they're not gonna come over there before they have to start work at 8 o'clock in the morning, and he knows that. But this has got to stop. This has got to stop before he kills somebody, and that's what's gonna happen. And he doesn't seem to want to do it, and I don't know why. Well, yes, money, maybe we should contribute to his thing so he can do it right, but I, I'm at wit's end, I really am, I just, I don't know what to do. We notified, today, we notified Ash Joe on Joe Hart Channel 4, we haven't gotten a response back, but the only other avenue is a class action lawsuit against him and code enforcement at the city of Carson. That's the only way out of this, because they're not doing, they, they say they're doing their job, and they probably are, but see, they, and Bill has caught him, and we've given, and we've given him pictures like he's asked for, and, but you know, he keeps paying the fines. Must be nice, he must make a lot of money, 'cause he keeps paying all the fines, but he doesn't comply, so, thank you.
How you doing there, guys? I'm Ed from Ed's Custom Sheds, I'm about a mile away from these homes, and in 2017, I would, I couldn't believe the pollution that was traveling into my shop, into my offices, you know, constantly. We constantly called up and complained about it. I had to go figure out where it was coming from. I went up his hill many times in the back on the south end to look where it was coming from, and sure enough, it was coming from his plant. Okay, well, I got ND EP to come up there with me. Okay, they would come up there, and they would spend, oh, a few minutes? You know, they would go and use their equipment and try to get a six-minute reading. On five minutes, he turned the damn equipment off. Excuse my language, I apologize. He would turn his equipment off. Now that happened many, many times, many times. I was up there with ND EP where he would turn his equipment off. "Oh, Ed, we can't get any readings. What can we do?" I said, "Stay up there all day, do your job, you know? Don't waste your community, uh, time driving back and forth. Just stay up there, camp out there, whatever you have to do." We're, we're breathing this filthy air constantly. Help us. Oh, and about the sniffer? The sniffer, what they do is they take a, a sample of the air, and then they mix it with seven other parts of air. That's what they do. I mean, it's already diluted, it's already diluted, it travels a quarter of a mile, and then goes to the field, spreads out, and, and then he puts seven more parts of clean air in there. Of course, it's gonna be diluted. Okay, the other day, I was working on my roof. I'm 60 years old, and it's hard work, okay? I was up there for hours tearing off the old roof, trying to do a good job and all that. All of a sudden, I smell this asphalt. You know, I was like up there, and I'm thinking, "There's nothing wrong with this area. I mean, why are we complaining and stuff? It smells beautiful out here. It is just absolutely beautiful, it's the freshest air you could ever breathe." And then all of a sudden, five minutes later, approximately, I didn't have my watch on me, five minutes later, we get this huge whiff of asphalt. I mean, I literally felt dizzy, felt nauseous, I literally had to come down from my roof. Now I only got a, a few days to finish this job, so I don't, really don't have the time to waste. But I went down, it was my house, I have other jobs to do, I need the money, believe me. But I wanted to come in this neighborhood to check it out before I came up here and complain to anybody. You know, I figured that would be the decent thing to do. And sure enough, I smelled it. Made me nauseous, sick, dizzy. I had to get down my ladder very cautiously. I had to go inside my, my house and get in the tub, pop some aspirin, and just sit there and soak until I felt better. Now, that was just yesterday. Now, that was just yesterday, okay? There's times in the past where I walked up through the back end towards the, his south end of his, his business. I'm walking up there, I'm smelling acid, and I'm like, "Oh, my God, now he's burning frickin' acid." You know, who knows what kinda chemicals he's using in this stuff? So, I'm walking up there, I'm, I'm excited because D, D, or NDEP was up there, and I wanted to talk to him, I wanted to get him out of their frickin' trucks and do their job. Okay, so I was, you know, I thought it was Special Fortress or something like that, something crazy. So, I, I was real excited, my adrenaline was going, I probably ran about two minutes, and then almost collapsed, but then started walking up there, and I got him out of their cars, and I said, "Hey, man, just do your job, let's get a reading." So, they get a five-minute reading. He says, "Turn it off!" Excuse my language, I'm sorry. Turn it off! And, and so, anyways, I go back down, I'm talking to him for ten minutes, I go back down. Twelve, fourteen hours later, I wake up with these terrible burns inside my chest, inside my chest, in my nostrils, on my face. I mean, I thought I was gonna frickin' die. I had no idea what, what I congested, had no idea. All I know is I was sick and I was trying to survive. So, what did I do? I called up Travis, Travis over at the NDEP, and I asked him, I go, "Hey, man, I am really sick." And he goes, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry for you." "Oh, great." But, um, and then I asked him, I go, "Is any of the other guys sick that was up there?" Says, "No." 'Cause I wanted to raise myself to poison control, and I wanted to see if any of those guys were sick, because maybe, I don't know, who knows what it could've been, you know? But, I, I just couldn't communicate with him, I had to get off the phone, I had to walk into my bathroom, I didn't know if I was gonna make it. I didn't know if I was gonna pass out and, and throw up, and drown in my, my phlegm or whatever, throw up. I was in there for hour after hour after hour, trying to eat an aspirin so I could recover. I mean, and then also, I mean, it's just not the smell. I mean, it smells annoying, it's all the other chemicals, the little particles that are floating up in the air and settles down, and it doesn't, it, it just stays there, okay? When the wind blows again, you get these, these toxins. I got a whole paper of toxins, if you want me to read it, I will. This stuff is very, very dangerous. This is not BS. I don't come over here, I, I don't speak in public, I'm a very shy person, but I am so upset because of this pollution. I, I, I kinda almost, I have to move, I have to move my shop to some different location, I gotta sell my little house, just to get the heck out of here, because I don't think in, in three or four more years, I don't even know what my health is gonna be like. You know, I tried to do some jumping jacks, just to, you know, try to trim myself up, and I used to do a hundred, no problem. I only did fifteen, I was gagging for air. I mean, this stuff is settling into your lungs, little tiny little particles, and it's blocking my air passages. This is very serious. We're eventually, all of us are gonna get together, and we're gonna get some equipment, and we're gonna prove that this guy is a polluter, a dangerous polluter, a dangerous polluter. And he's gonna kill people if, if we don't get this, this situation handled. He's gonna kill people, and also, one other thing, I'm gonna close, 'cause I know I'm boring the hell out of you guys. You know, Mount House, we love our children, we do, we all love our children, we just don't wanna see them growing up with a pre-existing condition. Please do something for us. Thank you. Oh, yeah, by the way, I have pictures today of his plumes. Now, he was doing a little bit of work with a small truck, and I have pictures. I couldn't develop them because my, I'm not very good with electronics, and my printer didn't accept my, uh, whatever you call it. And otherwise, I would've showed you pictures. He's got huge plumes for a small truck, just wait till he brings in the large trucks, the big semis, three, four of them. Thank you. Oh, I need to write my name down. And please, do something with this guy. This is life and death. And he's over there laughing.
I was just gonna say that I hope you're enjoying this, Mr. Matthews, 'cause you've been smirking the whole time back there.
I sure am.
My name's Melanie Harris, I live in Mount House.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And also, uh, it's getting kinda late.
I know, I'm gonna make it short. I have lived in Mount House since two thousand nine, and it was nice, I loved it. I'm single, I'm by myself, and I work graveyard, and I've gone out to work many times and smelled his stuff. And when I come home, if I left the windows open, guess what, my house stinks. I haven't used my swamp cooler because it gets in the swamp cooler. I had to go out and buy one for the inside of the house, that I could roll around. And coincidentally, maybe, I've had four major squamy cell skin cancers taken off my body in the last two years. The cat next door died from nose cancer with a hole in its nose. Coincidence? I can't prove it, but it's just funny how everyone has been getting sick the last two years. I've been to so many of these things, it's just frustrating now, trying to convince someone else. None of you would put your families in this neighborhood. You wouldn't let, you wouldn't buy a house in that neighborhood. If this were an upscale neighborhood, this would've been shut down two years ago, and you know it. Anyway, thank you. And that's my letter that I gave you.
Good evening, my name, name is Jan Wiley, and from my shirt, I work with Q and D Construction. I've had the privilege of working out on Curry Street. Monday, we paved. So, I got to smell that all day, because I'm escorting people from, uh, the Secretary of State right there on Musser, all her people, keeping them out of it. And it was kinda ironic, it's the nature of the beast, we all drive on it, we all need it. But somebody from the office says, "Is it gonna smell?" I go, "Unfortunately, yes, it is." My issue is that we were never notified from either county, Carson or Lyon. I moved in in two thousand and eight, bought a place, never had a problem. Now, I missed a lot of it, because I was working twelve to thirteen hours up in Tahoe when it started, when I was notified about it, and then when I got laid off, I thought, "What's that smell?", and then I realized it's asphalt. It's not a pleasant asphalt, because we get ours from SNC up in Mustang. It's a better quality asphalt. And I have to smell it as a flagger when I'm required to work with the, uh, the pavers. And so, I would like to go home. Sometimes I work six days, Sunday is my day off. Be nice to go home and not have to smell that on my solo day off. So, thank you for your time, I'll put my address. You're welcome. So, I vote no.
Stay in business, but be somewhere else.
Or comply.
Hi. We've lived here three years. Sonia Lee is my name, and, uh, my husband went out the other day, and he smelled it, and, uh, we've been getting, um, this white ash. We, uh, put water out for the birds, and it's been covered with this white, and, um, so, I'll take a picture of it, and, uh, we're wondering if anybody could test it to see if it's what it is.
If you'll make your comments to the commission, at the end, the commission will ask question, follow-up questions.
Hi, my name is, uh, Dave Lockhart, and I also live in this neighborhood with these folks here. I bought my house in oh-five, quite a while ago, and it's clean. Again, I, I'm not here to argue, I'm kind of a shy guy too, I don't wanna shut people out or nothing, but either he's not complying all the time, I mean, okay, maybe he has the ability to clean it up, and that's great, but I don't know how all that works, but turn it on, keep it going all the time so it's clean. So, I've been hearing some of what these people are saying, like, you know, it smells at certain times, and sometimes it doesn't. I think that's true, 'cause I mean, I've, I've worked on my cars at night in the garage, and I can smell it sometimes ten, eleven at night, but not all the time, it's really random. So, maybe it's the plume that blows a little towards my house one day, then blows more towards other houses at other days, I don't know. So, basically, I just wanna agree with what a lot of I've heard, it's just, seem like random smells that come and go. And if he can make the equipment work so we don't smell it, then, great, peace, you know, keep going, make your asphalt, we all need it, but, you know, we all drive on it, but make it clean so we can breathe properly. I mean, I'm not terribly old, and I'm not terribly young either, but there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood too, they're a lot younger than me, and it'll probably hurt them worse than it would me.
Any other public comment? Thank you for your input. Do we wanna respond to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond in sort of a broad way, just to sort of frame the situation and who the players are a little more. The state is responsible for air quality, the city does not have that responsibility. What is before the commission today is a review of a special use permit. The commission, not the audience, you hear me say this like a hundred times a meeting, every time you get a special use permit, if you can make each of the seven findings a fact in the affirmative, you may approve the special use permit. Every single meeting you have, we review the findings of fact, the seven findings of fact. Whenever staff's troubled by a certain finding of fact, we focus in on that finding of fact. So, I'm focused in on finding number two, not because I'm not, um, sympathetic to air quality concerns, it's just not within our realm, it's within the state's realm. With respect to finding number two, I am concerned with odors. Carson City heard from the residents of Mount House, the business people of Mount House, loud and clear, "There's a smell, we heard it." I didn't hear it personally, actually, I did, some of you have visited me, but I'm aware of it. We've met with NDEP, we're trying to work cooperatively, Carson City and NDEP, to get to a point where we can have a successful business person who doesn't negatively impact , uh, neighboring residents. Uh, the conditions before you today are, are aimed at achieving that, and the one-year review is to, so we can check ourselves and see how we did, because we do recognize the situation. Having said that, who gave permission to build back in two thousand and eleven? Carson City issued, approved a special use permit to have a rock-crushing facility and an asphalt plant on the subject property. Who was the inspector? I'm not even really sure what, what that question means, but he was allowed in two thousand and sixteen, based on the two thousand and eleven approval, to establish the asphalt plant. The city allowed him to do that. But there's various layers of regulatory agencies, so you have state regulatory agencies, and you have city regulatory agencies. With respect to the white ash, I'm not really sure what it is, I, so I don't know who tests that, but Ms. Lee, I'm happy to follow up with you and ask some questions of our Health Department on that, and also to coordinate with Lyon County on that. I just don't know what the answer is on that. But I think the focus of our planning commission today really, and I don't mean to sound bureaucratic, but it's to focus on the seven findings of fact. You are not set up, and we're not set up, we're not equipped to give you guidance on air quality, that's for state and DEP. But I can promise you, we'll continue to work cooperatively with them and with Mr. Matthews to try to get a successful business out there on Highway fifty.
And first of all, there's nothing this commission can do to shut the, shut that business down. That's not in our parameters, that's not in our control at this time. What, you know, this, uh, could be appealed to the city or whatever, regard, whatever the vote happens, could be taken to the Board of Supervisors when it's addressed there, if it is addressed there. That's not in our parameters. The, the ash, uh, one thought I had, is we had a lot of ash in my car this summer when all the fires were going, I know there's been, I've been involved at the golf course, quite a few fires out at the dump, maybe some of that ash might be blowing out of the sage where the sages burned from the dump, I don't know what kinda ash it is. But again, our parameters are looking at the seven, uh, the issues, and if we vote against it, it just continues as it is. If we go along with what we're proposing, he will be using an agent to help continue to hopefully clean the smell, that'll be being checked and being looked at. If it's not working, it'll be back here and we'll address it again. But there's, there's no way that, I, I hear what you people are saying, we, it's not in our power in any way to revoke this man's license, because he has got it, he already had an approved special use permit to do what he's doing, so.
Are you gonna extend his hours?
Hey, now, pardon me?
Are you gonna extend his hours, Tom? Please, Tom.
What, we have two options, we leave the hours the way they are, and there's nothing done as far as odor or anything else goes, or any working, he doesn't have to work with anybody at all, and it just continues just like it is, or he's asking for what, basically, another hour, hope, an hour a day, if, in which case, he's willing to then use the cleaners and whatever else, and hopefully work on the, on the issue. That's our two options, that's all we have.
If we leave it as is, and he, can't he do the same thing without extending the hours?
As I just stated, and I can't keep stating this, our two options are to just do nothing, vote against this amended thing, which means he continues, no checking, no cleaners necessary, whatever, 'cause those are being negotiated through the extended hours, or changing the hours. So, we're trying to work with the business, to work together to try to solve the odor issue. He has solved the air issue as far as the state is concerned, they will keep checking on that as well. If we vote not to extend or change what's in this tonight, then he continues as is with no, whatever.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please, okay.
The, I'm hearing some comments from the audience I don't believe to be true. NDEP has not mandated an odor suppressant. I have recommended an odor suppressant in the conditions of approval, based on independent research by, done by an air quality specialist at UNR in their School of Business, I, I forget the entire title, it's in the, it's in the, um, staff report. But allegations that he was supposed to utilize an odor suppressant and never did it, that has never been, come up in my meetings with NDEP. NDEP is not even certain those odor suppressants will work, and in NDEP's experience, the solution to odors is similar to what occurred in Fernley, not an odor suppressant. Thank you.
And in two thousand and eleven, when it was initially addressed, the odor, there was no discussion of an odor suppressant or anything else at that time. suppressant or anything else at that time.
Could I say one thing?
We, we're done with public comment, please, okay? Let us discuss our parameters at this, our level here, and our discussion, and we'll go from there.
Miss, to kind of touch on what we had been asked earlier, in a year, either can we approve or whatever conditionally, right now, that in a year, if the smell is still bad, or whatever, I know we're going to readdress it, but if it is that way, at that point, we can, or the city or someone can impose harsher restrictions, you know, like, I don't want to imply anything, but like shutting him down until the smell is gone, in a year, I don't want to get anybody all excited over here. But I mean, I, Mr. Matthews seems to be willing to do, he said it in his own words, he's willing to do anything to move forward. I think that, is that possible, that can we do it like that?
Okay, so, right now, he has a lawful entitlement. He le, he got that entitlement in 2011, the entitlement didn't anticipate, in my estimation, the odors that are being realized now. He's now asking for expanded hours, in consideration for that expanded hours, I am suggesting that we have to revisit the findings, and we have to address odor. I'm also suggesting we revisit, which means revisiting isn't revisiting the 2011 approval, it's revisiting the expanded hours in one year, recognizing that odor needs to be addressed. I think we're going in the right direction, but I don't know that for a fact. So in one year's time, it's not, we're not opening the door to everything, we're opening the door on this incremental change. There is a process that is not, the planning commission's not involved in, because you'd have to find that he was in violation of the special use permit. He has been in violation. I don't know what that is. He has been in violation of the special use permit, and I put that in my report, and I reported out on that. He has three notices of code violation from our code enforcement staff for operating outside the hours of, of operate, the approved hours of operation. If, if somebody, anybody, is acting in violation of their special use permit, we do have an ability to bring the special use back, permit back to the planning commission for revocation. In this case, we have three violations, and now he's coming forward and saying, you know what, I'd like the hours to start earlier. So I hope that helps, but if, if he were truly aggressively in violation of a special use permit, we do have the ability to schedule that and bring it to you for revocation.
I think what Commissioner Doris is asking is kind of what I was asking a little earlier, though we would readdress the odor thing as being part of that when it comes back, where if we don't do anything, we're done, the hours stay the same, the odor does whatever it does, and, and everything else. So the other thing was that regenerative thermal oxidator might be an option in a year, if that's, you know, whatever, but we will continue. Commissioner, thank you.
So if we know for certain that this particular piece of equipment works in Fernley, that it has taken care of the odor issue in Fernley, what is the reason that we are not going down that path, instead of using the chemical that it might fix the problem? Why do we not say, in order for the expanded hours to be approved, this regenerative thermal oxidizer needs to be put in before? So that's just my question, it's like, if we know for sure that it works.
I had spoken with staff about this, and I believe the difference is cost, that oxidators is over $1 million to put in. I believe it's not what we discussed, Hope, something in that.
I think there, there are two issues, one, there is a significant cost differential, but that's not solely it. I have been consulting with NDEP to get input from them and their regulatory agency. I've also been consulting with staff at UNR. When staff at UNR identified an odor suppressant, and then, but, you know, Mr. Matthews had no idea I was consulting with people at UNR, and he came forward with the exact same product, to me, it seemed to make sense to give him a chance to see if that would work. And so, since I independently received information that that seems to work based on research, NDEP just does not have experience with that working, that's why.
Commissioner Doris?
The flip side of that is, if you put that as a requirement in this special use permit, the applicant may decide to withdraw the application, and we're back to where we started, only worse. At least by, by passing, and, and I'm sympathetic to the, to people out there, but we're not the body that can make that plant go away. All we can do is try and address the odor issue, I think, right now. We've come up with a plan to do that. If it's unsuccessful in a year, then we have this special use permit to fall back on, not the one from 2011. We have a new starting place, where we have required 20-something different requirements that are, are designed to address this issue. If it doesn't, if we don't meet the issue in a year, this is the new basis, not the old one, which I don't think anybody in the audience wants to go back to, they want to see something better, not something worse, or the same. So we're trying to change, in, in, in our own little world that we have, this is about the only thing we can do, is find ways to try and make the whole thing better. If, if the emotion system works, then I think everybody's happy. If it doesn't work in a year, then, then we're back to this, and then we have, then we can consider revocation or anything else, but then if we revoke it, we're still only as bad as we are now, not as we were 11, 12 years ago. Okay, so, you know, I, I've, I've told the council many times before that it's not our position, I don't think, to, to change rules, all we do is interpret the rules we've got, and find ways to make them work. This looks like the best solution that I think we, as a group, have to work toward.
I think, to speak to everybody's point here, for you guys, you are being heard, and I think we're trying, you should know, we're trying, it seems like, if we're all on the same page here, we're trying to do something that will fix it, you know? And, and honestly, I think, I can tell it's a tense situation, but I think Mr. Matthews, if, if we take him and give him the benefit of the doubt, I think he's trying to do at least what's going to make everybody happy at a baseline, if not more, I think, I think we can all work together, not to be cheesy, thank you.
If we, if we approve this at this point, will he, Mr. Matthews then basically be required to start using that chemical anytime he's making asphalt?
Yes, his operations would have to incorporate the additive per the manufacturer's specifications.
It would be helpful if you could explain how, maybe how the additive works.
Yeah, Robert Matthews, uh, and to partner of Tahoe West for asphalt. Ecozorb is a chemical that you add prior, in the storage tanks, which, which sit and fester all the time, so they sit at 300 degrees, the oil is hot before you actually add it to the rock.
Right, correct.
Couple other questions, when people talk about seeing plumes, and asphalt is a dryer, so you have, you have four bits, it's like cake mix, you got rock, light rock, sand and sand, it has moisture in it.
Sure.
The plume everybody sees is steam, it's not dirt, it's steam, by the way, we have no way to create any ash that comes out of our product.
Correct.
It, it just doesn't exist, unless it's some of these stories, gases have certain physical properties, we're all smart here, they only act one way, they act the way of physics, gases don't go down, they rise when they're hot and they go up, so some of these stories you hear here are, just aren't physically possible in this universe, it doesn't, they react the same way.
Now, that's, I don't think that's the point.
And you've been around, and I know, the plant used to be down on Deer Run, correct? That's from back in the 70s, well, I know.
This is a brand new plant, but she talked about 2012, we weren't even operating until 2016, so some of these statements out here would just.
Okay, we just wanted clarification on the chemical, thank you.
I don't think, I, regardless of what was said, I think we all are on the same page as far as moving forward, I don't think that's necessary, we hear you, and, and concerns are being heard, and we'll address them.
I'm getting my paperwork.
Okay. The difficulty we have is that we can't solve the problem.
No, we can't.
We are the wrong body to solve your problem. We can't take it back. Because we don't have the authority to take it back. We can modify what we have, that's all we can do.
I think we can all agree, there's lots of things in laws all around, be it at municipal, state, or federal levels, that are, don't make any sense, perhaps we're in one of those situations now, but we're trying to do stuff to help everybody, we really are.
Hope, or the District Attorney's Office, could you, could you explain the revocation process?
If you give me a few minutes, I'll pull my code if there's any other comments while I'm pulling it.
Or maybe explain it to, to them.
Oh, oh, just in general? I thought you wanted a detailed procedure.
No, no, no.
Essentially, in any case, not specific to this, the planning commission has the authority to allow certain uses to establish. When it's called a conditional use, and what they approve is called a special use permit, they can only approve a special use permit if found, finding seven findings of fact in the affirmative, so you saw a lot of special use permits earlier in the meeting. If an applicant or property owner has a special use permit, and does not operate the use according to the special use permit, then we can bring the item back to the planning commission and request that be revoked. In the case of this special use permit, or this use, there have been violations of NDEP regulations, and you all attended those meetings, and there were $60,000 worth of fines, we, the commission knows this. It's an interesting fact, but it's in DEP's rulebook, it's not the commission's rulebook. In the commission's rulebook, what happened is we have three verifiable cases where work occurred before, outside the allowed hours, and missed, the business owner did receive a notice code violation. Would the commission revoke a permit based on three incidences? I'm not sure I would bring it to them based on only three incident, incidences. If we have a situation where we have aggressive violations, certainly, we can bring it back to, to the commission and agendize it to set a hearing for revocation. That's not what today's hearing's for, today's hearing is to consider a modification of the hours of operation, and the commission is looking at this as an opportunity to address something that's not working, the odors. And I think you've all stood up here, one by one, and Commissioner S. Wine asked me, are you hearing about the noise? I didn't hear about noise at the podium, I heard a lot about odors. So hopefully, that answers your question.
I think in an effort to abate the smell, I move to approve a request to modify special use permit SUP 10-115-2, to modify the hours of operation based on the ability to make the seven required findings in the affirmative, and subject to recommended conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Does that include the amended?
I would ask that if it's okay with the commissioner, if we could modify the motion to say, subject to the recommended conditions of approval contained in the staff report and supplemented in the memo of October 22, 2018, the memo prepared by the planning manager.
All right, I move to approve a request to modify special use permit SUP 10-115-2, to modify the hours of operation based on the ability to make the seven required findings in the affirmative and subject to the recommended conditions of approval contained in the staff report, and subject to the memorandum issued October 24, 2018, regarding the aforementioned motion. I apologize, and subject to the memorandum dated October 22, 2018, regarding the aforementioned motion.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay, and I'm, well, I understand the intent is to resolve the odor issue, and that's fine, but I don't find that staff found to my satisfaction findings number two, number three, number six, and number seven, so based on that, I'm voting nay.
Passes five to one. Upside.
Somebody's coat is still there, your coat.
No. Okay, continuing on, F. Staff reports, non-action items.
Okay, we have a lot of applications for November, I didn't write them all down, so I'll try to remember real quick. The Fandangos, and for a special use permit for a larger sign, we have a SUP for a big garage, similar to what you had tonight. We have a zoning map amendment with a tentative map for that area down by Draco that you looked at, way down, you had a master plan amendment there. We have a Varions over in Silver Oak, we have a modification to the tentative map in PUD for vintage, we have, let me think, we have about four more things, anyhow, we have a lot. And it's going to take some time, and I believe you're going to handle either growth management or master plan update, I forget which one. So you got, you received an email from Shelby in our office, and what we want to do is, what, we want to understand what's going to work for you, because starting the meeting at five, I think is going to be too late a start time, so we, I'm suggesting we start earlier in the day, give you a break, and then start up again, and maybe it's just a lunch break, so I can either poll you separately to see what works, because you have personal obligations, so I don't want to conflict with those, I want to work around those, or if you, if you feel like we can get consensus tonight on what will work, we can just kind of figure that out.
What was presented was maybe nine to 12, and then three on, and I said, I don't think we really need a three-hour break in between, you know, is that, what are you going to do for three hours? We actually have it all day, so we could start earlier, just go from two or three on, if you wanted to.
The, the proposal was the nine to 12, and then from the three-hour break, so that would give me three hours to catch up on stuff, and then come back, so I like the idea of the three hours.
I really don't mind either way, whatever you guys come up with. We complain, I know.
Oh, I just remembered one of the other items, a zoning map amendment over on Cochise, where I showed you those apartments had had the NPR, and they have a right-of-way abandonment as well, so that will generate some interest.
I think we were thinking of doing the simple stuff in the morning, and then the ones where more people are apt to be here, do that in the afternoon, so they could get here if they liked the vintage, and there was a couple others. Cochise one, or whatever, if there's going to be interest, so.
Why don't we do one of them in the morning, and one of them in the afternoon, so we're not slammed?
Yeah, I, I just want to be sensitive to people who work, and so the things that are going to generate people.
All right.
But we can, we'll look at the schedule. I'm thinking the three o'clock start might be the growth management stuff, and then five o'clock hard start for public hearings.
Do we get lunch, Casey?
Now that's why they're giving us three hours. Oh, I didn't have my mic on, I'm sorry, public comments, if anyone wants to comment. Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Tingle made a motion, Mr. Doors seconded, we're adjourned.